Good evening and welcome to the September 19th, 2018 Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. At this time, I would request that everyone please turn off or mute all electronic devices and please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rezoning applications heard during tonight's meeting will be voted on by the Planning and Zoning Commission. The Commission will then make a recommendation on the applications which will be submitted to the St. Charles County Council for their final decision. The applications will be scheduled to be introduced at the Tuesday, October 9th, 2018, County Council Meeting. Conditional use permit applications will be heard tonight and once the Commission makes a recommendation, the applications will be scheduled to be introduced at the Tuesday, October 9th, 2018, County Council Meeting. Public comment will be taken tonight and at the Council Meeting on Tuesday, October the 9th, 2018. Public comment on conditional use permit applications will not be taken at any meeting of the County Council held thereafter. Applications for preliminary plaits heard during tonight's meeting will also be voted on by the Planning and Zoning Commission during the meeting. The vote on preliminary plaits is final. Only a recommendation for denial of a preliminary plat would be heard before the County Council. The following documents are introduced as a matter of record for this evening's public hearing and regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Those documents are the Unified Development Ordinance of St. Charles County, including zoning maps, and the Year 2025 Master Plan for St. Charles County, which includes the Year 2025 Future Land Use Plan map. Before we start with our agenda, I will give you information how the meetings work if you've not been here before. I will read into the record the application that is pending before us. At that time, we will ask the applicant to come forward and present their application. Sit me back up. I'll read it into record and then I'll ask staff for their recommendation. Then we will have the applicant come forward and present the application. At that time, the Commission may ask questions of the applicant. Then we will open the public hearing. Anyone that has, will have an opportunity, if you so choose, to come and speak regarding the application. If you are going to speak, and I've noticed quite a few, you have already filled out cards that are right here on the rail, but if you haven't, please fill out one of those cards so that we get your name correct in our record. Once the public hearing is closed, then we will have the applicant come back and address issues that were raised during the public hearing, answer any questions that the Commission may have, and then at that time, the Chair will entertain any emotion from the Commission regarding the application. Since we have a large crowd here tonight during the public hearing, if someone has already addressed an issue, the volume of the number of people addressing the same issue, we ask you, if you're coming to speak, address a new topic, provide additional information. I see we have a quorum. Do I have a motion to start the meeting?
I'll make a motion.
Halls in favor, sign aye.
Aye.
First item on our agenda is rezoning request 18-09 and PRE 18-14. Owner/developer is TBJJ Enterprises LLC. Current zoning is A agricultural, five acre minimum lot size. Requested zoning is RR, single-family residential district, three acre minimum lot size. The area consists of 9.34 acres. The location's on the north side of Highway Inn, approximately 2,500 feet west of Klaus Lane in Council District 2. Staff.
All right. On this application, 1703 Highway Inn, we do just have the rezoning this evening. The preliminary plat was pulled from the agenda. It's not quite ready to come forward. They do, you do have a concept plan that was sent out with your packet. That was their first submittal. We're currently working on the second submittal, so right now, we're just working on the rezoning. And as you mentioned, it's 9.34 acres. The total acreage of this site is 22 acres. Right here is a creek that crosses over into the remaining acreage, 12 acres to the north. The applicant is only wishing to rezone the southern portion. Basically, it's on this side of the creek and they're asking for rezoning from agricultural to RR, single-family, three acre minimum lot size. Staff did look at the land use. I guess it's not in there. The land use does call for RR in this area. Let me add that on here. It is an area that's expected to develop with low-density residential. Right now, that is a one to four units per acre. However, this is going to be just one unit per three acres. The property does have a public water supply, which makes the use of a septic system and individual wastewater treatment system viable on these size parcels. So, staff did look at these issues and with that, they were recommending approval of this application for rezoning.
Any questions for staff?
They have 22 acres, zoned agricultural. They can put three homes on that, five acres each. I know they want to parcel that. Is it possible to put three homes on that on five acre plots and that would leave a remaining seven, if my math is correct?
Well, this is, they could cross over, you're talking about crossing over the creek?
Yeah, I'm just looking at the total, there's 22 acres, zoned agricultural.
Correct.
Five acre minimum.
Correct.
So, actually, they put four homes on it now and not even come before us, but they want to rezone it. My question was, have they looked at just putting three homes on it on five acre lots as opposed to three?
Yeah, I think that you probably would want to talk to the applicant about that. We understood that the problem is crossing over the creek. It is a 500-year floodplain and it does pick up pretty quickly after that and drains up to Sam's Creek to the north. So, that right now is an issue. That plus, it's a wooded agricultural area that I think they wanted to keep as an agricultural area without pulling trees out and building a home up there.
Did we get any letters of opposition?
We do have one letter of opposition.
And the applicant has the letter of opposition? Or knows what the person is and what they're objecting to? The applicant?
I'm not sure if they...
Oh, okay, we'll ask.
Any further questions for staff?
The lot numbered 1725, is that a five acre lot? The one immediately to the left of the subject property?
It's a four acre lot.
It's a four acre?
Yes.
Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, will the applicant come forward? I'll need to square you in. Please raise your right hand. We can do them both. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in these proceedings and the pains and penalties of perjury?
I do.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, my name's Tom Burke. My address is 2211 Chariot Drive, Fenton, Missouri. I'm the civil engineer, speaking on behalf of the client.
Go ahead.
I guess you'd like to, just a quick rundown, or would you like to just answer the questions?
You can go ahead and give us your rundown.
As stated in the recommendation by staff, it is the 22.22 acres and looking to just subdivide the lower nine, 9.28, I believe it was, acres?
9.34.
9.34, alright. And that was with the three acre minimum.
You want to put that up on the stand?
Sure, sure.
And I'm sorry, what's this gentleman's name?
Todd Corrigan.
Thanks.
Go ahead.
It was, like I said, it was staff recommended this be approved, and again, this is just for zoning. The issue with the north side, the 12 acres, was the 500-acre floodplain that provides a significant obstacle, and it said one to four homes per acre, and we've, you know, exceeded that. It's just one per three acres. So, we feel that the rezoning should go through approval, especially because the 2025 Master Plan actually states that this would be a RR zoning.
So, please state your name and address for the record.
Todd Corrigan, and 301 Wilmer Valley Court, Wentzville. And this is, just so you know, this is the reason we're doing the three acres or the three lots. This is not for building homes and selling. This is actually three family members, myself being one of them, that just want to, we live in a subdivision, or we did just move from a subdivision where we all lived in a subdivision, large scale, and now we're going to hopefully build three homes together and just have a little family subdivision.
Any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Leave that. We will now open the public hearing in regard to this application. Is there anyone in the public wishing to speak regarding this application? Anyone? Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing. Any questions from the Commission? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
To approve?
Approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. McBride, how do you vote?
Yes.
I vote yes, Mr. Cleary?
Yes.
Mr. Fromm?
Yep.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. Klinghammer?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next on the agenda is rezoning request 18-11. Location is 3545 Kaplan Osage Road. The owner is Jeff Hood, Sherri Hood, and Kyle Hood. Applicant Kyle Hood. Current zoning is A agricultural district, five acre minimum lot size. Requested zoning is RR, single-family residential district, three acre minimum lot size. Area is 3.98 acres. Location is on the west side of Kaplan Osage Road, approximately 700 feet west of Old Log Cabin Trail, located in Council District 2. Staff.
All right. On this property, in your staff report, you'll read where, if you remember, in 2006, the county introduced RR zoning, three acre minimum lot size, and then agricultural zoning was made more, a little bit more conservative. It used to be the three acre minimum lot size and now it's five acre minimum lot size. That ordinance took effect in February of 2006, so anything that was recorded in a parcel split after that date was required to meet the minimum lot size of five acres in agricultural zoning. This property right now is zoned agricultural. The previous owner of the western piece, the 3562, owned this entire parcel, which included 3545. They, however, split this property in May of 2006, which made it ineligible. The ordinance in agricultural zoning also allows for a type of homestead creation, so if you had, for instance, an eight acre parcel, you could parcel off three acres on the original home if it was built prior to 2006, but the remainder also had to be five acres and meet the new minimum requirement for agricultural zoning. This parcel was split off, as I mentioned, in May of 2006, so it's ineligible. It is a 3.98 acre parcel. Both parcels, I understand, have since then changed hands and so consequently, in order to build a home on this parcel, they would be required to ask for the RR zoning with a three acre minimum. They are, like I said, at 3.98 acres. There is currently a driveway for access to the home. There is a stream on the property. However, the home would have to be built with a minimum setback away from the stream. But staff did also look directly across the road there to Old Log Cabin subdivision. Those are three acre lot sizes. So, and recently, directly to the north, those two parcels were rezoned to RR. So, staff did recommend approval for this lot size being reduced and rezoned to RR.
Any questions for staff?
Letters.
I'm sorry.
Any letters?
Yes, I'm sorry. Two letters of opposition and one of concern.
Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, will the applicant come forward? Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in these proceedings and the pains and penalties of perjury?
I do.
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Sherri Hood. My address is 32 Sherwood Meadows Circle, Martha'sville, Missouri.
Okay, go ahead.
So, I'm here tonight with my husband Jeff and our son Kyle. Together, we bought this piece of ground with the intention of this, Kyle, our son, building a home that would be his primary residence. It's a mile away from our current house and three miles from our daughter, so we're all going to be really close. Kyle went through the process of meeting with an architect. He had plans drawn up. He collected all the bids. It wasn't until, he even applied for the construction loan. It wasn't until applying for the building permit that we became aware of this issue with the ordinance that was put in place in 2006. It was presented to us as a buildable lot. I know that I probably should have, you know, caught it, but I didn't. I just assumed it was a buildable lot. We were going to build a house. As the staff recommended or noticed that there are quite a few other homes around on three acre lots, so I'm really hopeful that you guys will approve it and let us go forward with our plans to build a house.
Any questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
We will now open the public hearing for this application. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in regards to this application? Have you filled out a card?
I did not, no. I just got this in the mail stating...
Okay, well, please raise your right hand. You solemnly swear or affirm that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in these proceedings and the pains and penalties of perjury?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Gary Strukoff, and I own one of the lots that's within 1,000 feet of that, what she's trying to rezone here is properly right now. And my concern is, once we get it started, I'm not for sure what they're going to do with the other three lots or two lots are in there. I was forced to buy five acres. I am sorry that they didn't, but I believe in the five acre lot just for our, you know, it's been like that since I bought it. The people next to me had to buy five acres. The field behind me had to buy five acres, and I just believe that's the way it should remain and stuff. That's all. I mean, I'm coming down here just to find out what was going on is what I did, and I walked in a little late, I know.
Okay.
So, I apologize for that. I was thinking it was in a different room, so, but, you know, that's my concern, is just, I don't want to see it getting started out there. I believe I've lived out there all my life and I want to see the farmland preserved.
Any questions? Okay, thank you, sir. Please take one of the white cards there and fill that out so we get your name accurately in the record.
Okay.
Anyone else wish to speak regarding this application? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Is the applicant here to come back?
I just want to say that I understand his concerns, but I feel like this missed the cutoff of your ordinance by two months, just two months, and I don't know what else to say other than I really am hopeful that you will approve it and let my son build a house that will be his permanent home. You know, he's not planning on subdividing, and it's four acres, so it's very close to the five acre minimum. 3.98 is pretty close. That's all I have, and I'm open to any questions that you guys might have for me.
Is that the entire size of the entire tract?
3.98 is the entire tract. It won't be subdivided any further than that. It was subdivided from a parent property in, I think, March or May, just a couple of months after the ordinance went into place. And honestly, I mean, at that point, it shouldn't have been allowed to be subdivided into less than five acres, but it was. And we truly did not know when we bought it that this was going to happen. We went, I mean, we've gone through the whole process of the house plans, the bids, the construction loan, everything now is on hold due to this.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Commission have any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Hold on here, let me...
Second.
Mr. Fromm, second. Mr. Coon, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Klinghammer?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
I vote yes, Mr. Cleary?
Yes.
Mr. Fromm?
Yep.
Next on the agenda is conditional use permit 18-10. The applicant is Ward Development Services. The owner is Leonard A. Norshild, I may have mispronounced that, Revocable Living Trust. Property zoning is A agricultural district, use requested telecommunications tower. The area consists of 20.73 acres. Location on the southwest corner of South Highway 94 and Jackson Street, adjacent to the city of Augusta. Yes, is located in Council District 2. Staff.
All right. On this application, staff, on this application, staff does have to address the five issues for a conditional use permit. Would establishing this affect the public health, safety, or general welfare of the public? Would it injure the use and enjoyment of other property? Would it injure the aesthetic or scenic value of the vicinity? Would it substantially diminish or impair property values? And would it impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding Consequently, when staff did look at this issue, the tower proposal, actually, it's a monopole. It's referred to as a tower. It's a monopole. It's proposed to go from the site plan from what we could see, go in this little grove of trees right here where my arrow is pointing. This would be an enclosure with six-foot tall fence with barbed protection wire at the top protecting it. So, staff did go out and we looked at the area. We looked to the north, the east, the west, and we did see that that enclosure with the equipment and such and the fencing would be screened. However, you will see in the recommendation, and I'll get to that in a minute, staff did recommend that there be a little bit more landscaping required on the southern portion around this fencing area. We also requested that the pole be painted a singular color. Typically, they're painted white, sometimes blue. That also helps to ease the sight in the area. So, consequently, we did look at all these issues and we did recommend approval, however, with conditions, and the conditions are the six that are listed there. They asked for 165 feet in height. We asked that it be painted a single color, that there be no lighting or outdoor signage except for warning signs and signs indicating owner contact information. We also asked for the minimum six-foot-high chain link fence and vegetated buffer located on the south side of the fence compound area. We also looked at, which I forgot to mention to you earlier, that we did also look at other antenna facilities in the area. There is nothing within a mile that they could locate on, and the applicant will probably explain the technical portion of that in better detail than I can. However, we did ask for these considerations, so we are recommending approval with those six conditions. There was a letter of opposition and also a resolution in opposition from the Town of Augusta.
Questions for staff?
Yeah, we've had a lot of these cell phone issues, and I think I brought it up several years ago. There's no communication between St. Charles County, St. Charles City, Wentzville, St. Peters, O'Fallon, and we've had issues where, just where the border is from here, my son, Mike Klinghammer, and there's a tower there, and they want to put one here. And most of the cell tower people, from what we've had from the legal standpoint with Bob Hoynick in the past, we've turned them down, and then the county gets sued and they get it up anyhow. One of the things you said, less than a mile, do we know exactly how close the next cell tower is and what the carrier is or carriers are on that? Because I think it's important, because this proliferation of towers, we've heard from the public a lot of times, it's, this is a rural area, but we've had them in a more dense part of St. Charles County, and it's always been a problem, not in my backyard. And the people that propose this, they've come up with different patterns. We need more capacity, even though there's a cell tower a couple hundred feet away, but it's in another municipality.
The details on that, like I said, I would rather the applicant explain that to you, but I can't think of the name of the road. It's on the northern side of 94, Thursburg Road is the closest one that we could find.
And how far is that?
And I believe it was explained to me that it was, that it, again, I'll have to ask the applicant, but it was too, not the right frequency or bandwidth or whatever. I'm not sure. But it is not within a mile.
Does the county have a tower in the south part of...
We do, and we did send that over to emergency communications to make sure this would not have any interference. They do have some plans in their application, so we sent those over and they did assure us and sent us written confirmation that it passed and would be okay with emergency communications.
That's the tower that transmits 911 calls and...
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes. So, we're looking to get conditional use requests...
Yes, so we're, we're looking to get conditional use requests for that entire 20.73 acres. Why isn't it just a conditional use for that footprint as opposed to the whole acreage? And if it is the whole acreage, what other, what other uses could fall under that? That's my biggest concern right there.
Okay, the reason that they're asking for the entire parcel is they are only going to lease a certain portion of that, and what they have presented in their concept plan is what you would be approving and sending up to council. Any major change from that would require them to come back to you. And also, this would only be a conditional use permit for this specific plan that they're presenting here tonight. Also, by choosing the whole parcel, we're also meeting that extra step of notifying everybody within 500 feet, not just, if we, if we zoomed in on that little lease area, we might have reached three people.
Any other questions?
No, that's...
I have a question about the single, single color.
Yes.
Does the staff have a recommendation as to the color? I mean, if they could paint this orange or red or?
No, I, we would have to approve that if you want to place a specific recommendation on there, that would be your...
Okay.
Be at your request. We can change that for council.
Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, will the applicant come forward? Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in these proceedings under pains and penalties of perjury?
I do.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Steve Ward, 15 Park Place, Swansea, Illinois.
Okay.
I'm here tonight representing PI Infrastructure and Verizon Wireless for this application for a conditional use permit. As staff said, and they went through most of the sighting issues, the one issue that are, not issue, but just kind of a question, the way the site's situated in that grove of trees, it's actually pushed back into that grove of trees on three sides. So the, I think it's the eastern side would be, you know, facing the street, and we can do any landscaping that staff would want or want placed in that area. As far as any of the other conditions, we have no issue with any of those conditions. The one thing I will point out is painting of a tower. It's a galvanized stainless steel pole. You can paint them. They do peel. It's a maintenance issue. What we found over the years is that a slate gray is usually the best to blend into the sky. That's like a fighter jet gray. But if they want a white or if they want a blue, that's really the county's discretion. Was a question about other towers?
Yes, Steve, well, a couple, while I'm talking, you just mentioned Horizon's one of the people on the tower. Are you going to have other phone companies as well?
The tower will be owned by PI Infrastructure. It's being built for Verizon Wireless as the anchor tenant. It's not a speculation tower. It's being built for Horizon. PI's business is to lease space, so it'll be made available for anybody that wants to go on it. A tower this high can usually hold three to four users.
Where is the closest Horizon tower to where this is?
That I don't know. It's probably within four or five miles. I could get that information if it's needed, but this is a hole in the network. It's been a hole, and we've not been able to really cover the village of Augusta very well. There are two towers up on top of the hill, which I sent to you, Ms. Mar. One is a St. Charles County tower. The other is a privately owned tower. I think it's got T-Mobile on it. We did look at those towers. They just don't cover that ridge coming back down, down the bluff. When we did our search, we also did contact the city of Augusta. We were told they don't, they don't want towers. They have no mechanism in their ordinance for towers. Don't bring a tower to us. Life's too short for a lawsuit. You know, there's federal law and state law that preclude that, but we went ahead and looked outside of the city limits, and it's some pretty rough terrain once you get past 94. So our options were fairly limited on what sighting we could get to actually hit the area that we needed to go into.
How about towers on the other side of the river in St. Albans, St. Charles County? Do you have Horizon Towers there where you'd have a clean, clean?
I'd have to go in, and I don't have that. I'd have to go in and research it. I don't think there's anything in St. Albans. I know there's some things out on Highway T and on a water tank out past St. Albans, but I could, I could get you those maps, but we were just asked to get everything within, you know, a mile.
So you're really having coverage problems, not capacity for?
It's both. It's both these days. Coverage and capacity, you're kind of multi, you know, it's which is, which is which. You know, if you have so many users on a phone, you start bringing down the capacity. You know, coverage, if, do I have one bar? Do I have coverage? But do I have capacity? It's, it's kind of linked together.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
The, is this, the, for lack of a better term, antennas and whatnot, are they going to be internal to the, to the monopole? Are they going to be hanging on the outside?
They'll be on the, they'll be on the outside.
I know some of them get large, and we've seen others that the diameter of them is smaller and says, close to the pole.
Yeah, and there's, it's a, it's a design issue. Back in the 90s, 2000s, you saw a lot of flag poles go up in western St. Louis and in St. Charles. The problem with the systems and the way they're designed, it's now, it's speed. So we need to get the radios closer and closer to the antennas. So what you're seeing on these towers is you're seeing small boxes that are being placed either underneath the antennas or behind the antennas. All that equipment, sorry, does not fit inside of those small diameter poles. So you're seeing applications, I think the county's seen them, where they want to put the antennas on the outside of the flag pole. So it's, those, those flag poles have a really bad limitation on not only the radios and speed, but then how many users you can put on them, because now we're chewing up space to try and pack everything on the inside. As far as tight pack or how far the array, that can be specified. Usually, if it's just left to the open, the carrier will say, hey, I want 12 feet or I want 15-feet platform. I can put on it what I want. There are some jurisdictions that come back and say, hey, we want you to limit that more of a tight pack so you can have your three antennas.
You've got to understand from our perspective, we're not really interested in how much profit the, the, your company, the one you represent can make. We're, we're much more interested in, in what it looks like and the, the impact and for the community.
Sure.
Like, we all recognize that most, if not everyone in this room and in public today carries a cell phone around with them. We're getting our, our cable signals and a lot of other things via the internet. So we all recognize that it needs to be there, but we try to minimize the, the impact on the, on the community as well.
Sure.
Is this a pole that's going to have guy wires that come down from it, or it's a single pole?
No, as Ms. Mar said, it's a monopole. So it's a straight tube that's inside of our fence compound, and then the antennas would be up at the top. There's nothing that would be outside of our fenced area.
Okay.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I'm sorry, one other thing just occurred to me. You did look at the county, the county tower that we already have?
Yes, we looked at it internally from a propagation standpoint to see if it would work for the needs. It didn't work, but we did not contact the county. I think that's something that we need to do if it's not already been done to see if we're going to interfere with them. We won't, but it's, I think it's part of the ordinance that we contact them.
And there's no way to hang the antenna array on the, on that pole, on that tower?
Not to cover what we're trying to cover. I mean, we still need a site where we're needing, where we're at now.
Okay.
Any other questions for the applicant? Seeing none, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We will now open the public hearing for this application. If anyone here would like to speak, yes, sir, please come forward. You solemnly swear or affirm that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in these proceedings under pains and penalties of perjury?
I do.
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Bob Hofer.
Move over just that mic right there.
Bob Hofer. I live at 5549 Main Street in Augusta.
Go ahead, sir.
I'm also the chairman of the board of the town of Augusta. Make sure you guys received our resolution as a council or a commission with the details of our resolution that we passed at our September 10th meeting. You received that with the, the information. All right, well, a couple of points out of that, if you've read that, then I guess I wouldn't really have to read that, but I would like to read it for the other people who are here. St. Charles County Executive Council on Planning and Zoning, the trustees of the town of Augusta, passed a resolution at its September 10, 2018 board meeting to write a letter opposing the conditional use request for a cell tower at the southwest corner of Highway 94 and Jackson. We feel the installation of a cell tower at the entrance of our historic town would substantially diminish the scenic views and ambiance that draws tourists to our area. As an independent Missouri charter town, tourism is critical to our economic stability, providing jobs and a tax base to maintain our own services for our residents and our businesses. In June of 1980, the town of Augusta was designated the first American viticulture area in the United States, ahead of Napa Valley. That designation continues to bring Augusta and St. Charles County widespread recognition in travel and wine industries that encourages visitors to our region to experience wine country and our spectacular views. We respectfully ask that you not recommend approval of the conditional use 18-10. A couple of other points I'd like to make, if I could. The master plan 2025 says that this area should be zoned as agriculture and tourism. I believe that there's a question on the entire property on whether that really deserves to be zoned, rezoned as a conditional use or provide a conditional use for the entire 20 acres. I would worry about the potential for the future of what other kind of communications or applications that could be applied for to further grow that particular piece of land. And I believe that St. Charles County needs to provide an ordinance for future since it has lacked, since I think the last cell tower was part of a goal to provide an ordinance for St. Charles County, and that was never done. Any questions for me?
Any questions?
What's your cell, or what's your reception for?
I actually have Verizon, and it is occasionally weak, but I also have CenturyLink from my internet, and that's pretty weak. So I think it's like you mentioned, it's one of those things that we have to deal with on a daily basis and figure it out on what we can do and what we can't. I guess one other thing is I can't tell you. I know that he talks about the, down in the hole, you won't see the fence. I agree, you probably won't. But what you're going to see is this tall pole sticking up in the air when I can drive down Jackson on a weekend or almost any day of the week, and you wouldn't believe how many people stop right there, look to the west as the sun sets, and take pictures of the grapevines in the sunset, and now we're going to get a pole.
Do the people of Augusta share your thoughts about not having this, or?
Absolutely.
They do? They'll give up the phone service?
You brought quite a contingency here tonight, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I guess, you know, the future, as I mentioned, Mr. Klingheimer, everybody's got cell phones. I guess the next generation is G5, and that means everybody's got a phone. You got to throw them away because they don't work on G5s. But the trend is more electronic, and as he mentioned, I know we've listened to a lot of cell companies, both capacity and signals, which is going to, and I, I'm in the agricultural district, and you drive by things, but I also think when you get anybody in this room, when you get into a place where you have no cell service, it's, it doesn't feel comfortable. You know, you're waiting here, your mother, your father's in a hospital, your kid's doing something, and you can't have that. And, you know, somewhere, I, I heard the applause here, but I think looking down the future, I mean, if I, if I saw a tower, it would not bother me going down to Augusta. It hasn't. I guess that's anybody's appeal, but I think the long range, when you have visitors coming down there for the agricultural distance, that's, that's something I would think anybody would want to know or, or need. So maybe some future thought for this in the future. It's only going to expand, it's not going to get less.
Well, that's why, that's why I agree. I think it's important that St. Charles County provide an ordinance to give direction for your own commission and executives for the future as well as neighboring municipalities.
How many people are in the township of Augusta now?
Well, I think we just had a newborn about a week ago.
I think we're up to 253.
253 people. Well, congratulations to the newborn.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir. Anyone else here to speak? Yes, sir, please come forward. Please raise your right hand. You solemnly swear or affirm that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in these proceedings under the pains and penalties of perjury?
I do.
Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Randall Oaks, a business owner in Augusta, Missouri. I'm a board member of the Augusta Chamber of Commerce. I'm a board member of the Augusta Heritage Foundation. And your question, sir, about how many people live in Augusta, it's kind of like everybody needs to go to the dentist, but nobody really wants to go to one. How is our reception out there? It's scattered. Just following up on what the town chairperson said, if we, if we allow the scenic nature to be whittled away, we're going to lose it forever. From a planning and zoning standpoint, it isn't just a blight in our front yard there in Augusta. What it really is, is a potential blight for the county of St. Charles. We have Main Street on one end of the county. We have the rural area, the first designated wine district in the United States, on the other end of the county. Tourism and agriculture is our major industry there, and if we, if we don't protect that unique environment as we grow, and we have to grow, we have to have some kind of balance between the commerce and, and our natural resources and everything, but if we lose that uniqueness, we've lost it forever. And I'm not saying that perhaps we shouldn't have a cell tower somewhere, but I would think that in that area, it could be placed someplace else, because where it is being placed is literally in the town's front yard, and it will destroy the aesthetics. It will affect the, the economy of the county. So from the planning and zoning standpoint, I encourage you to consider the long-range negative aspect of that, not to say not to have it, but is there some other place that we could put it? Thank you, sir.
Any questions? You solemnly swear or affirm that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in these proceedings under the pains and penalties of perjury?
I do.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Philip Estes, 173 Jackson Street, Augusta, Missouri.
Go ahead, Mr. Estes.
So I, I totally agree with Bob's comments and Randall's comments, and so I don't need to repeat those points. I'm representing, my wife and I, who moved from St. Louis County because we were attracted to the scenic beauty of the area. We bought a house on Jackson Street, and one of the reasons we bought that house is because it has an amazing view looking west. And this tower would, would just be a sore thumb in, in that view. Randall said that it's, it's right in our front yard. It literally is. It's, it's very close to my backyard, but it is the front yard of the town. And as, as one of the part-time artists that participate in the annual plein air festival in Augusta, I can tell you that, you know, of the 165 or so artists that come in town, and then the multiplier effect of their visit and other visitors who come for the art, it's huge, and that location is probably the most popular spot for artists to stop and do paintings of the area. There is tremendous value in, in that view right there. My other, my concern directly is the impact on my property value. As I said, the, the attraction to the property... As I said, the attraction to the property that we bought was largely impacted by, by that scenic aesthetic value of the area. I would also like to recommend that there, there should be another site considered. There are sites, I believe, or at least one or two on the north side of 94, that would not obstruct views for the town. I don't know if there's a, if the fire station property and around that area was considered, but that certainly would not, in my view, impact the town's aesthetic value. But there, there have to be, I would think, other properties that are not in the front yard of Augusta.
Any questions? Mr. Estes. Thank you, sir. Anyone else? You solemnly swear affirm that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in these proceedings under the pains and penalties of perjury?
I do.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Andrew Gildhouse, 211 Lower Street, Augusta, Missouri.
Go ahead, Andrew.
Well, I don't wanna take up everyone's time and refresh the topics that everyone already talked about, but I would like to kinda elaborate on some of the points that were made. Phil made a point about home values. A study was made in 2014, a survey of 1,000 people, 79% of them said that they would not be interested in buying property next to a cell tower, and as you can see in the proposed location, there are numerous houses right next to them, to the proposed area. And it is my belief that, and I do not know this for certain, that the entity that wants to lease this ground out also has ground potentially to the north of 94 that is of higher elevation and away from the other homes. I would also like to make a point on Randall's point about the tourism industry. The WTTC last year had a study, and it had that tourism outgrew the global economy by 50%, and I think that's something that the committee should consider. And finally, I would like to touch on Verizon's latest commercial that they have rolling out about 5G, and if you give me one moment, I'll pull up the quotes from that. It starts with a woman engineer, and she says, "Being a Verizon engineer is about doing things right, and there's no shortcut to the right way." And the commercial closes by her saying, "And I'll always be proud that we're not just building America's first 5G network, but we're doing it right." And I asked the committee here tonight if they think that this location is the right spot for this. That's all I have.
Any questions? Thank you, sir. You solemnly swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in these proceedings under the pains and penalties of perjury?
I do.
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Ellen Knornshield. I live in, on Jackson Street in Augusta, and I am also the town treasurer. I oppose 150-foot cell tower, which would be quite visible, because I feel it would have an economic impact on tourism. 33% of the town's income, according to my last fiscal year, came from sales tax and business licenses. There are no businesses in Augusta that are not tourism-related. So, but, and also, half of the properties in Augusta are owned by people who will either have businesses or work at businesses that are tourist-oriented. So a loss of tourism could severely impact property values. Back in 2002, the planning and zoning investigated passing a scenic byway for the South Highway 94 corridor. Eventually, it failed because of opposition by property owners who felt it would restrict what they could do. But also, in the county's master plan, promotes hospitality and tourism for, in the Augusta area, and it indicates that telecommunications facilities are a conditional use that is not appropriate to this corridor, which, whether or not it's legally called a scenic byway or not, it's still is a scenic byway. So that's everything I have to say.
Any questions? Thank you, ma'am. Do you solemnly swear affirm that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in these proceedings under the pains and penalties of perjury?
I do.
Please state your name and address for the record.
At Thomas Convoy, I live at 5568 Main Street in Augusta, Missouri.
Go ahead, Thomas.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out the obvious, I have AT&amp;T, and I don't miss any calls. So I also have a dish for my TV, and it goes out when the weather goes, right? But that's why I moved out there. I don't wanna look at a tower. And it's right on the turn entrance to Augusta. There's two entrances, one's on a bike path, and one's on Jackson Street, and it's not the right place.
Any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one else, we will close the public hearing and ask the applicant to come back if he so chooses. Any questions?
Sure. Someone had mentioned that you have a piece of ground on the north side of 94, is that correct?
Mr. Knornchild has a property on the north side of Highway 94.
Okay.
And that property was examined. He also has a property on the south side of Highway 94 between the two entrances. He owns quite a bit of ground in Augusta. He does have a piece on the north side, it's also a very rough piece. It's got a slope at about probably 18 to 20%, which would not be conducive to build a road to get up to the top of the property, just isn't feasible. Too steep. There is a fire station across from Jackson Street, that was looked at. The property is very tight, the way the fire station's set up, the property in the back of the station, it appears to be open, but there's quite a drop to get to that back portion, and that's what they use for their septic field. So it just, it just wouldn't work. There was a mention of rezoning the property. We're not rezoning, this is agricultural property, it'll stay agricultural property. Mr. Knornchild is keeping the vineyards and the vineyard and the agricultural use. It's just a conditional use for that portion of that 50 by 50, or whatever the area is.
Do you know why it wasn't applied that way?
We basically make application, and every jurisdiction's a little different. If we just, sometimes if they send the notifications out on the 50 by 50, and I've got a 100-acre parcel, the notifications go to nobody. If they notify everybody within the parent parcel, then more people get notified. And I think it's got to do more with notifications than the conditional use being across the entire property. I think you could write the conditional use to be pertaining to only the leased area, I think. I'm not, I'm not an attorney.
Okay.
And one of the other questions I think you addressed, Mr. Griffin, yes, you know, there is tourism, but one of the problems with some tourists is they want coverage, they want the, the ability to use their phones, they want the ability to reach their family. And if they can't reach their family, if there is an emergency, they won't be back.
Any other questions?
One of the issues of other locations, you just referred to the person that owns these plots of land, you mentioned the firehouse. What if the applicant, hypothetically, that has the north property, this one, didn't want a cell tower, he's just gonna grow grapes, you wanna put a tower, what are your other options down there? I can't believe that there's not another parcel of land where you can put this and you would make all the residents of Augusta very happy.
All I can tell you is we did an extensive search, we did review substantial number of properties. We feel this is the best property for what we're trying to achieve.
If I can jump in, what's your number two choice, then?
I don't have a number two choice, I'm presenting this, I'm presenting this location. And it's, it meets the-
You said you evaluated other sites.
It meets, this property meets the county code, meets the state code, meets the federal code. We think that this is a suitable location.
Right. And we understand, we understand that.
Sure.
It's the north side, I mean, it may be cost you more to put it there, because it's-
We'd have to carve that mountain down, it just isn't feasible with that slope on that It was reviewed, our engineers went out and looked at it, they just said it's not possible. That's why that piece is vacant.
Okay.
Any other questions for the applicant? Seeing none, we'll bring this back to the commission.
Yeah, I, I do have some serious concerns about it, and I, I think for things that Craig mentioned there, you know, that there, it might be more expensive to develop, but on the other hand, it's not right in the town's entrance, so I, I do have some reservations about it.
Same thing. Set out of plots, but I cannot believe that there's not another piece of land out there that this would work, it's impossible. So I'm not in favor of this, but.
I have a question for staff on this. We've had these cell towers before, before, and if we vote them down, they just get overturned, don't they, normally? Because it's, there's some federal rules on this, too. If there's a necessity, can you comment on that? I'm a little, I can't remember all the-
Well, okay, the, first of all, this would be a recommendation.
Right.
And so the county council would actually make the decision on whether or not to approve or, to approve with conditions or deny it. There are a couple of things, I, my understanding is under federal law that local jurisdictions can't take us into consideration when deciding whether or not to approve a tower. One is safety considerations, that's handled by the FCC, the way I understand it, and also under Missouri state law, I understand that local jurisdictions can't take into consideration the technical aspects of, in terms of coverage area. In other, in other words, you can't require them to turn over technical information about how well it will work or be served, and then use that technical basis to approve or deny a cell tower. That's really up to the cell tower companies. But you can review it in terms of its effects on neighbors, on aesthetics, on how it fits into a neighborhood or doesn't fit, visual intrusion, or is it compatible? Those are questions you can ask. You can look at things like distance to property lines, in this, in this case, it's set back the so-called fall zone if, if it fell. The way they're designed typically, they'll fall pretty much straight down, but if it were to fall horizontally, it would have the fall distance to serve it.
Any questions or comments?
Robert, thanks for that information. I think it, it helped me make up my mind. The aesthetics are what they are. It's right going into one of the prettiest towns that we have in St. Charles County. It's one of the, of the primary tourist areas, and I, I haven't seen enough evidence that there isn't another location that can be, that can be served, so I, I don't see any reason to support the, the cell tower in this location.
Anyone else?
If so, not, I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, but Mr. Griffin, is there a second?
I'll second it, only because we needed to move the agenda along.
Mr. McBride, how do you vote?
No.
I vote no, Mr. Cleary.
No.
Mr. Trump?
No.
Mr. Coon?
No.
Uh, Mr. Klinghammer?
No.
Mr. Griffin?
No.
I have a, the application fails. Now, where's my agenda? Okay, yeah, we'll take a short five minutes, so all of our neighbors from Augusta can-
Two minutes.
Head back home. Oh, cell tower to beer.
Hey, guys, hey.
Hey, folks, folks, could you please clear the room? We have other meetings stuff to do, so if you're not here for the next one, we need to get on with our agenda. Thank you.
Yeah, we don't have control over that, sorry.
Good to see you. I'm so glad it failed.
Okay, we go about, yeah, we have to have two hearings. Okay, we will restart our meeting. Next item of the agenda is conditional use permit 18-12. The location is 4151 Benny Road and 4451 Benny Road. The applicant is Yardstick Studio LLC, the owner is Blue Heron Polo Club LLC. Property zoning is a agricultural district, use request is a brew house. The area is, consists of 56.01 acres, located on the north side of Benny Road, approximately 3,000 feet west of Wilson Road, located in Council District 2. Now, before we start, there is a companion application for property located on the south side. Okay, so we will have, we will do the north side property first, and then we will go to the south side property, but we, we have to have two different proceedings. Staff.
I do want to update one thing from the agenda, and that is the correct size of the acreage is 184 acres on four adjacent parcels under common ownership. So the current zoning, again, is a agricultural district. The current land use is agricultural, and then the 2025 land use map recommends future agricultural uses. This property is owned agricultural, all the surrounding properties are owned agricultural. I would note that even though the, it's zoned agricultural, there are about 17 homes that on adjoining parcels, and those parcels range in size from three acres to 20 acres in that, in that range. So you may keep, may wanna keep in mind those 17 homes that are on adjacent or adjoining parcels. The petitioners requesting a conditional use permit for a brew house, and because this is the county's first application for a brew house, I might explain for just a moment what a brew house is. Under the county's zoning regulations, the definition is one or more building structure and open spaces utilized for brewing of beer or cider and/or distilling of spirits for both onsite and offsite sale of consumption, with or out accessory uses such as preparation of food, sale and service of prepared foods indoors and outdoors, conducting of weddings and/or receptions or other private parties, and tours of the brew house. I would probably characterize this as a, as a rural destination. And to back up in the big picture, you probably understand and have seen that there is what you might call a local foods movement, not only locally, but in the United States, where people are really taking interest, where does our food come from, wanting to go out and visit the site where food is produced, I think that's one of the reasons that farmers' markets are so popular. People wanna meet who is growing the food, they like to see where the food is grown. And there's also a related interest in farm-to-table meals, where people will go out to a farm and the- where people will go out to a farm and they'll be served food by a gourmet chef, for instance. Again, this is part of a larger, you might even call it a movement that we're seeing. Earlier this year, county staff holds what's called a one-stop meeting with developers in the interest of customer service and then also economic development. It's not unusual for us to meet with developers or people interested in different business concepts and asking us if they can move forward, how they move forward, or what sorts of things, permits they will need. So in this context, earlier this year, we met with the applicants and they have a concept that doesn't fit or did not fit under our previous ordinance. What I mean by that is our previous ordinance earlier this year, I would call it kind of a nineteen nineties brew house or microbrewery approach. What I mean by that is the nineteen nineties concept was that previously you could have a microbrewery, but it was a restaurant first and foremost, and you could only use thirty percent of the gross floor area for a, to produce beer, and you served it within the restaurant. Also, interestingly enough, in the agricultural tourism district, in the AT district, in order to have a microbrewery at that time, you had to have a winery in order to have a microbrewery, meaning that you had to have a microbrewery, which is part of a restaurant, which is part of a winery. And so the, the concept that was in our ordinance previously, I would say that it was, in my opinion, it was an outdated concept of this sort of use. In April, I attended the American Planning Association's conference. And one of the sessions I attended was called Whiskey Beer and Wine Legislative Industry Needs, where representatives from Frederick County, Maryland spoke about how they saw this growing synergy between wineries, breweries, and distilleries there in Frederick County, Carley, Frederick County, Maryland. And they're talking about both ones in small towns and in rural destinations as well. And so they were talking about the need for updating of codes and ordinances. And that's something that kind of opened my eyes for this, this sort of use as well. This proposed use is what you might call somewhere between a microbrewery and a, and just a typical industrial brewery. It's somewhere in the middle. It's, it's not a microbrewery because now the size is not necessarily that large. What I mean by that is, is I understand that it's about, the production might be about twenty-five percent more than the Trollhead Brewery on South Main Street. But the concept would include both production for onsite consumption and offsite consumption as well. But there's also a component here where they'd like to, to tie this to the land as well. So people could come out and have that rural experience. And they could both get the experience of the brewing, but also of, again, the land. They could see possibly hops growing, grains, and et cetera. And so the concept would include the brewery, a beer hall slash restaurant indoor event space for up to two hundred and fifty guests, outdoor seating for the beer hall or restaurant, outdoor space for special events. And then what I would call subsidiary uses, which include offices, a museum, and gift shop, and property tours, and barn or sheds with animals. Now, I would say that this is one hundred and eighty-four acres. But if you just draw a circle around the area where they'd like to place this specific use, it's about eight of those eighty-four acres, and that includes some adjoining land. So overall, it'll be a little over four percent of those one hundred and eighty-four acres they would look to use for this use. And it's located principally in the middle of the one hundred and eighty-four acres. That's about the best I can explain it. So there'd be a new building, which would be about twenty-five thousand square feet, a maximum height of thirty-one feet. And that building, the mass is broken up visually by having a variety of projections and a variety of roof, complex roof line. So that is in order to help break up that mass. And so visually, it's more appealing. Additionally, they would have unified architecture and the theme would be, and a gabled roof. So the theme would be more like you'd see of, maybe in Germany, perhaps. They'd also have a parking lot of about one hundred and five cars. And that parking lot is included in that area that I mentioned about of roughly eight acres. In terms of traffic, there's, there's two factors I see here. One, you've got guests coming, coming and going on Benny Road. Benny Road is a connector between, you might call it a character between Highway D and Highway DD. There's a fair number of cars that, that will use that as a cut through from Highway D to DD. There's, as I understand it, there's also semi-tractor trailer sized vehicles that currently use that as well. Some of those are farm-related, some of those are not. But this concept would include two to three semi-tractor trailers per week, they say. And so that's something to take into consideration. But in addition to those two to three semi-tractor trailers a week, you'd also be talking about cars for guests and for employees. They're looking at, I think it's about fifteen employees. The applicants can explain more about the number of cars they feel that'll be attracted each day. I would note that we're at the first stages of this application. And so no, and for the benefit of the audience, no decision has been made. This is the first introduction where the Planning Zoning Commission will review this, make a recommendation to the county council. And so the county council's consideration would be to approve it as submitted, approve it with conditions, or deny it. And again, this is a recommending, recommending body here. Since this is a conditional use permit, after holding a public hearing, you may choose to recommend certain conditions that would address any land use impacts for neighbors, for instance. And these could include, would the proposed use be detrimental to or endanger public health, safety, or general welfare? Would the proposed use injure the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate area? Would the scenic value of vicinity or substantially diminish or impair property values? Or would the proposed use impede development and improvement of surrounding properties? County staff's recommendation is based on the overall concept that this proposed rural destination would be developed primarily on that eight of the one hundred and eighty-four acres of land and that about seventy-seven acres of woodlands, which would remain kind of basically a wraparound this proposed use. Now, there's a couple of exceptions where, one is where the applicants are proposing to carry the, a landscape buffer to, to bridge a gap for one of the neighbors. And county staff has a recommendation that would address the views for another neighbor that we feel are, would be lacking or another gap for, having to do with those woodlands. The county staff recommends that the Planning Zoning Commission recommend approval with nine conditions that would address everything from noise and sound, amplified music, the hours of operation, parking areas, commercial entrance off of Benny Road, landscape buffers, and preservation of existing forest areas and tree lines. And also deal with or limit the loading, unloading, and idling of trucks during certain hours.
Any questions for staff?
We all have this thing right here.
Yes.
In print. Okay?
Yes.
I have a problem. Ever since I've been on here and everybody else, we've had this in writing. This was, this new definition was brought with Joe Brazel on June twenty-fifth. It was voted and signed on July sixth. Nobody here has anything in writing on this. And we got an email from the county council on nine fourteen explaining this new definition. Why? I mean, why, why is the big delay since July sixth? We're in September, we have nothing in writing. This is the Bible. This is what we go by. This is the law for St. Charles County. We have nothing. And don't tell me you have to go online to do that because we have always had this in writing. And that's an assumption that, oh, everybody's going to go online. People don't go online. So we need to get that corrected.
All right. If there's anyone who does not have a copy of that section of the ordinance, we can provide that to people as an insert for the, for the three-way binder.
Well, none, none of us have it. But I think we need it also in a timely manner and not at the same time as when something's before us. And that's all I have to say about that.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff? I have a, I have a question. We say applicant has submitted the following uses to be considered a number eleven area for housing, viewing, and interacting with animals, a petting area in parentheses. Do you have any recommended conditions regarding the animals?
We did not, we did not add any, any recommended conditions. The building that they showed was a very small, I would call it a barn, in the middle of the property. So we didn't add any conditions for that or recommended conditions.
Okay. Any other questions for staff?
Yeah, there's, if you look at the, this map right here that you guys gave us, there's two CUPs in there next to it. Can you tell me what those are? Seventeen oh-two, it looks like, and seventeen oh-one? Or is that just?
I'd have to look that up and research that. I don't know offhand.
Okay.
The seventeen ten and seventeen thirty-seven?
I, I can't really honestly, is it seven oh-two or seven oh-one, maybe? I can't tell if that's a one in front of it.
I think the seventeen ten and the seventeen thirty-seven represent the rezoning applications for those two subdivisions or those.
Yeah, but they're CUPs.
Oh, I see, there's a variance that was granted for, across the roadway.
Mm-hmm.
Across Wilson Road. Oh, you know what? I think those were for fences. Were those the Wilson, LA, do you remember if those were the Wilson Road fences? In a front yard? I remember there were two fences built in a front yard set back on Wilson Road. And they came before the board of zoning adjustment and they asked for a variance.
Okay.
I understand the, the. Concept that they're, that they're going for now. And I guess if I was, lived in that particular area, I'd be concerned about the growth of this as well. I was recently in Kansas City and had the opportunity to tour Boulevard Brewing there. Started off in, with one tank and it was successful and grew. And now they have four or five of these lines of beer that they're making. Can you talk about what, if, if this thing, five years from now, whenever, if they come forward again, what control do we have on growth of the, of the, of the brewery there?
Sure. First, the, the concept plan is really important. And that should be attached to and part of any ordinance that might approve this. I don't know if this will be approved or not, but let's just say it is. The concept plan will dictate how this development would go forward and what they could do. They can expand it beyond the concept plan more than, it's about ten percent. There's a, the ordinance specifies that if it's, basically if it's more than a ten percent beyond that area, land area, they've got to come back before this body and the county council.
Guess I'm not really so worried about the land area because breweries are, can be very compact on the amount of space that they actually take up.
The number of barrels.
The volume that they're producing is directly related to the number of trucks that are going to come and go.
Right.
If you're suddenly producing, you know, a lot more barrels of beer, then you got more product leaving as well as, as materials being brought in.
As I understand it, the council can impose conditions that address these impacts on neighbors. And so if you're concerned about truck traffic, for instance, and you feel that that's tied to the number of barrels that are produced, you could, I think you could impose a condition on the upper limit of the number of barrels that would be produced. You probably would want to speak with the, get input from the applicant on their thinking as well in terms of the number of barrels they're looking at now and in the future.
Unfortunately, that's something that we can address not only tonight, but also when it, when it makes it to the council meeting and we'd get another, another shot at the same thing. That's all I have for right now.
Okay, I have one more question. In your analysis, you say the concept plan proposes a maximum height of thirty-one feet, three inches and an average height of twenty foot, nine inches. Pursuant to section four oh-five point four one oh, governing body is allowed to set height limits for all brew house structures.
Right.
Have you made any, considered any recommendations as far as height requirements and how it might impact the surrounding area?
No. We noted the height just for reference, so people could have that concept. And if the, the county council chooses to, they can impose a height limit for this structure. That's the height that they're proposing. So for instance, if the county council want to say, okay, we'd like to place a limit of thirty-five feet just to be sure that it wouldn't, that would conform to what they proposed or was approved, you know, that's possible.
Thank you.
Will MoDOT ultimately have to stamp, put the stamp of approval on this themselves? Or what kind of influence will they have on this?
I'm not certain about MoDOT, but certainly St. Charles County. And I believe that at the time of site plan, if it should get that far, then the county staff would likely require traffic analysis to look at things like, they may have to put in a commercial entrance. Are there any needs for widening of shoulders or a turn lane signage? But we would want to know real specifics on that use. I'll give you an example. Think the applicants would need to tell us what their traffic plans would be. What if they have this use on the north side, they have another use on the south side, and they want to run a tram between the two? They haven't said that, but if they did want to do something like that, we would need to know about it. We would need to take that into account for traffic. So I don't want to presuppose how the traffic impact analysis would turn out because I just don't even know all the parameters yet of what the applicants are proposing in terms of traffic.
It seems like that'll have a pretty big influence on how this thing ultimately happens, you know? I mean, it's a, but, you know, if everybody approves of the actual location and the site plan, but they're concerned about the traffic problems, then we have to deal with that.
Yeah, I think the proper time for that is at the site plan approval. And actually, it's in the code, it says that at the time of site plan approval, either the county highway department director and/or the direct development review division can require a, a traffic analysis be done.
Who would pay for that? I mean, we just had that result with the buffs down there of ninety-four. And the traffic studies were presented by the applicant and which favored less traffic at that intersection. But anybody that's driven there is going to totally impact that. And I think the applicant also mentioned it would be. And then we, and I asked, who is going to pay for that? And shoulders went up. It's going to go on the taxpayers of St. Charles County. And that's a major intersection there at the, and traffic. But similar thing, we had a subdivision just off of going off Highway Double D. And there's a little dip past the movie theater, it was on the left across the Kim Reba's stables. And the builder didn't want to put a turning lane in there. And they didn't want to pay for it. And finally, it was either going to pay for the turning lane or it wasn't going to happen. If the, putting the cart before the horse, if this thing gets approved and then a traffic impact study says, hey, wow, this is going to require a big interchange here or there, like you said, with a tram, who pays for that?
Traffic study would be paid for by the applicant. They'd have to hire a, a registered engineer to perform that, and they would, they would pay for that study.
But most of the, we saw that even at Wind Castle would.
Yeah.
But most of the, we saw that even at Wind Castle would, when the petitioner has a traffic study, I've never seen a traffic study in a negative. It's always supports. And Pickett Engineering, I believe, did Wind Castle. And when I questioned, when did you take it and what were the methodology? He sat in a lawn chair with a hand clicker and he did it between 10 and 11. And I said, no, everybody's gone to work. So it was a low impact on that. But it wasn't necessarily the, if there is a traffic study, it needs to be done independently. And number two, my question was, let's say, for the sake of argument, MoDOT or St. Charles County comes up with, we've got an impact here and there's going to be a traffic light, major impact, who pays for that? Either it's at Double D or at Benny Road in DD or over at Benny Road on Highway D. Who pays for it? The taxpayers? Or is it, I mean, if the petitioner says, we're not paying for that, then what happens?
Well, our traffic study usually involves offsite improvements that are right there at the entrance or nearby. Normally, the traffic studies honestly answer more of the question of how this can be done rather than if this can be done. Normally, the answer is, well, if you want to do this, these are the things that you're going to have to do to make it work. And those might be any number of things. But there are times when we require a traffic study and, for instance, the traffic study will say, well, there needs to be a dedicated turn lane at this location to get into this site. And the county will require that. But we can't, I can't say we can't, but it's, it really needs to be based on the study rather than us just guessing whether it needs to be happening or not.
Just go ahead.
Yeah, and I share a lot of the same concerns and traffic studies themselves don't answer all the questions. You know, I was on a board across the street when Newtown was developed and Robert, I think you were around at the same time, they convinced us or stated anyway that Newtown wasn't going to create any more traffic or any major changes to the roadway structure, which was absolutely crazy. But anyway, do we know how far it is between the area that will be used for outdoor events, weddings and receptions and whatnot, to the closest homes?
I had that number and I'm sorry, I forgot. It's over 1,000 feet. Okay.
Okay. I'm going to have some questions while, wait until the applicant comes up, but about the hours of, that they'll be allowed to use outdoor facilities.
I have a question too. On the, so the, I can't imagine that with it being a brewery that it's not going to use just tremendous amount of water. Has there been any kind of study done on what effect that's going to have on the aquifer?
No.
Because these other places are spread out over three, five, 20 acres, and now you're going to be brewing beer and you're going to be, just going to have a tremendous use of water right there. And I think that that's part of, it should be known.
No, no study's been done that I'm aware of. Now, the applicants can answer that for certain. But this type of operation would require a commercial well. It'd have to be engineered, it'd have to be approved by the state of Missouri. So it's more than just a regular well that someone puts down for their house. It's, it's.
But it's still going to draw out of the same aquifer, whether it's a commercial well or whatever.
I assume, unless it's some deeper aquifer, I just don't know.
Okay.
But, yeah, water and wastewater will have to be, the applicants will need to handle both of those themselves because this doesn't have public water supply, it doesn't have public sewer service. The city of O'Fallon is about two miles away. The city of Numalee is about two miles away, the nearest points.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Saying none, the applicant come forward. Okay, we will.
No, I know.
We need to have all five of these, so I'll rotate them.
That's fine.
Can you have packets that I handed out, they're probably a little bit small to read? But, yeah, there'll be, I've got to have these.
And then I have these to place on here if we can do the overhead. Do we do the?
Yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, where does that pop up over there?
Can we have the overhead, please? Overhead projector?
Oh. How do they turn it on?
They'll do it.
They'll do it?
It takes a moment.
Okay, let me, we'll swear you in as a group and then each one of you need, gives your name and address for the record, so please raise your right hand. You solemnly swear affirm that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in these proceedings under the pains and penalties of perjury.
I do.
And individually state your name and address for the record.
Rod Kazinsky, architect, 2732 West 42nd Avenue, Denver, Colorado.
Billy Bush, owner and manager of Blue Heron Farm. My address is 10184 Winding Ridge Road, St. Louis, Missouri, 63124.
Thank you.
Billy Bush, Jr., number one of seven children, reside with my father at 10184 Winding Ridge Road.
Mark Godfrey, brewmaster and vice president. I'm at 22 Catfish Court, Defiance, Missouri.
Thank you. Go ahead.
All right, so just to give you a little background, my family has been part of the St. Charles community, St. Charles County, for over 100 years. I grew up working out at our farm in St. Peters, Missouri, as farming, helping farm the place and taking care of it. Bought our land in Defiance back about a little over 20 years ago and raised my children there and my family. And I think our past as a Bush family kind of speaks for itself. I think we've always been pretty good stewards of the community. I think we've been environmentalists, conservationists, people who preserve the area and really care about the area. And I do understand the concern that people have, but I propose that the positive effect of a brew pub in a small microbrewery in, on our property far outweighs any kind of negative effect there may be. Now, not to be redundant, I think this gentleman pretty much explained himself, explained what we're doing pretty darn well, but I'm just going to add to it a little bit. The reason I believe that it is a positive addition to the St. Charles County area is because it practically ensures that that 184 acres is going to stay open and free of development. We're going to have a small portion of it developed for the unique, beautiful countryside-looking European barn brew house and brew pub. But other than that, it's going to stay pretty much open. It's farmland, we're going to grow hops, it's going to be an educational area, it's going to add value, I believe, to our neighbor's place and the whole community. It's a family-run business that we're all a part of, and it will be a very family-oriented venue for people to come and enjoy. And that's why I'm so positive about the educational part, showing families how beer is brewed, the ingredients, growing crops on the farm, crops that you use to make beer with, so that people can really understand farm-to-table beer, farm-to-table food, farm-to-table spirits, and those kinds of things. And our brewmaster not only can make beer, and he's going to learn how to make spirits, but he can also make root beer for the kids. So it truly is a family-oriented place. Our dream is to also, you know, put some animals out there so people can walk around and see some animals. To me, it showcases the beautiful area that we live in, in Defiance, and the beautiful area that we're all a part of. And it's a way of really enhancing that area. So I hope that you all would find it very positive yourselves. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Bush? Saying none? Anyone else want to speak?
So, yeah, we're going to, yeah, you want to go next?
Yes, my name's Mark Godfrey, and I would like to give you a semi-technical overview of the equipment inside of the building, and then Mr. Kazinsky will discuss the building itself. We are intending to have a microbrewery and distillery, and I'm going to try and take it from the top to the bottom. I won't take a whole lot of time doing this, but I'd like to give you just a glazing overview so that you understand the equipment that's involved to do this. And I'll discuss everything, including the well, actually. We will have three silos on site, which, one of which will hold barley, one of which will hold corn, and one of which will hold spent grain, which has been used by the brewing process, that would go out to feed our animals and create compost. Those would be partially shaded by something that Rod can tell you a little bit more about, something decorative to shield them a little bit and give them kind of an interesting element. Our well is kind of unique. Mr. Cleary, I believe you rose a question about the aquifer. I've recently had quite the geological education, and I'll tell you exactly what we're planning. We are planning a 1,200-foot-deep well that will completely penetrate the aquifer that our neighbors are using for their houses. It's called St. Peter's Sandstone. Below St. Peter's Sandstone is a shale formation called the Everton Formation. It's referred to as a containment unit. It's waterproof. It separates the St. Peter's Sandstone aquifer from the Rubidoo, which is below it. We're going to penetrate completely through the Everton Formation and through St. Peter's Sandstone, and we're going to end up in the Rubidoo, which is a much larger aquifer that is, my understanding, is fed by Lake Michigan. We will case it out, which is to say a pipe will be inserted and the water that comes up through the well can only come from the Rubidoo. It is physically impossible for us to affect our neighbor's wells. I've discussed this with the Department of Natural Resources, I've discussed it with the well drilling people, Flynn, and I've also discussed it with a geologist. And happy to discuss more about it, but that is our current plan so that we don't affect our neighbor's wells. That was actually brought to my attention through many of the meetings we had with our neighbors. Wasn't, I wasn't aware of it, and I learned about it, and we fixed it. So pretty proud about that. The brew house itself, the brewing equipment, is comprised of two main zones. The brew house, which physically makes wort, which is unfermented beer. This is made up of five vessels that are heated by low-pressure steam, and the cellar, which are fermentation tanks, which are chilled. The brew house boils the beer. I'm going to go into a couple concerns that I've heard in an attempt to streamline things tonight, and of course, we're happy to come back and discuss more about those and their intricacies. A lot of people have expressed concern about odor. Now, we're all from St. Louis, most of us, and we certainly know what Anheuser-Busch smells like. I'd like to make a comparison between the two. Anheuser-Busch has seven 605-barrel brew kettles. The brew kettle is the main kettle which puts the odor out into the air. They run these brew kettles 24/7, 360/5, opposing each other. So all seven aren't running, but as many as two or three might be running at a time. We will have one 22-barrel kettle. It's roughly half the size of a Ford F-150. So relatively small, it would have 40, the equivalent of 40 kegs of beer boiling inside of it, and you boil beer generally for one hour. So when we brew, there would be odor emitted from the building through a penetration in the roof. We've heard from our neighbors, they expressed disinterest in us having quote-unquote "smokestacks." We never intended to do that. These roof penetrations aren't tall. We do have a chimney for a fireplace, of course. We are happy to make these taller. We don't want to create smokestacks, but if somebody would like us to make them taller, we're entertaining that. But in the grand scheme of things, we'll be boiling beer maybe two or three times a week after we open for one hour at a time. I think the nearest occupied structure is about 900 to 1,000 feet away. We think that the wind would probably have to be pointing right at your house, and you might have to be outside at that exact one-hour interval to possibly smell our product. So while Anheuser-Busch can make the entire half of a city smell, we don't expect that we can really make much of a smell at all. So as far as noise, and I'm not referring to noise associated with the events, I just want to talk about the equipment. The only noise that our place might emanate is the barley silo. The type of truck that delivers the barley uses a vacuum system to suck the grain out of the truck and blow it into the silo. We expect to get a barley truck maybe once a month at first, and it would, of course, be more frequently later on. It sounds very much like a fan or a vacuum cleaner, but louder than that, running. Takes maybe 20 minutes. So maybe 20 minutes once a month. It's also the same technology used on the farm. There's lots of farms, so it's not an uncommon sound that you would hear when there are silos all over the place. The brewing equipment itself doesn't make any noise. There's no hissing or whirring. I mean, there is, but it's inside the building, it's not very loud, so we don't expect any noise from the equipment to be emanating. The cellar tanks, as I mentioned, are chilled, and I wanted to talk a little bit about, I do have a section about traffic that I want to touch on last, but I want to jump in on the discussion of what happens if this place grows and how would that affect the truck traffic? You're right that there's two sources to truck traffic. There is, I'm sorry, two sources to traffic in general. There's customer vehicles, and then there would be trucks coming to deliver things and/or pick up beer and take it out to our distributors, or, and also, of course, the barley trucks. We highballed the number at two to three per week at our initial inception, which is 2,500 barrels. We actually don't expect to be at 2,500 barrels till, well, we would love to be there immediately, but we're thinking probably year three is where we would be. Inside the building, there will be available space to add more cellar tanks. You wouldn't know they were being added, but there's, there's an open space where you can put more tanks, you can make more beer. I think, Mr. Klinghammer, you were talking about Boulevard, right? So that's very true, can expand. Our calculations show that we could produce about 7,500 barrels of beer inside the building if we wanted to expand that much. So that's a tripling of what we're discussing with the initial 2,500 barrels. I did some calculations after I heard what you said, and I actually came up with 3.36. Now, I just, we just got done telling you we're probably expecting between two and three trucks a week already. Well, I just did some math, and I think we were extra conservative. I really don't expect, but let's highball it at four. The thing is, there's a whole lot of beer that fits inside a truck, about 1,500 cases, and we're just going to be making cans and kegs. So I've got to have empty cans come in, empty kegs come in, full cans go out, full kegs go out, and I got to have barley come in. And of course, there's a trash truck and the guy that delivers the food if we're going to have some food at the restaurant. We tried to highball it at between two and three, so I'm going to go to four when we pegged the building out. Couldn't put any more tanks inside. So really, in my opinion, a drop in the bucket. Well, Defiance resident, I'm pretty familiar with the traffic patterns on Benny Road, and four tractor trailers in a week is really not a whole lot, because there's plenty of farm traffic and other stuff that cuts through there. As far as the packaging lines I mentioned, we're not going to make bottled beer. We're only going to make canned beer. We're planning to make four packs of 16-ounce cans in small quantities, also kegs, generally one-six barrels, which are the smaller kegs. Those will go out to our St. Louis distributor and eventually, hopefully, to distributors across Missouri. Again, you can fit a whole heck of a lot of beer inside a truck. Unfortunately, we'd probably be paying more for freight up front because we won't be filling those trucks. But as we expand, we would hopefully have full trucks, and that's one reason that the number of trucks really didn't increase that much. As far as wastewater, I know that's a big concern to a lot of people. We are working with a company called Cambrian Innovation. They're in Massachusetts, and they manufacture a unique MBR slash aerobic wastewater treatment plant that fits inside of a shipping container that would reside inside of our building, not outside. It has to be heated. You can put it outside, but it costs a lot more because then you have to heat it. So the way it would work is brewing, now, we're talking about brewery wastewater. So you're talking beer, yeast, you're talking the cleaners that we use to clean the tanks, bits of grain, hops, proteins, nitrogen, this is brewing waste. These are going to go into the drains, they'll get lifted to a stainless steel holding tank. The device will take this water from the stainless steel holding tank and purify it. I'm not going to be able to go into the chemistry of it. We're, this is part of a concept plan. These people assure me, this is their business, that this thing makes incredibly clean water that can even be reused for other cleaning procedures. At which point, we clean the water, we now have this wastewater and we have the issue of what do we do with it? There are two concepts that we are investigating currently. One is called land application. Land application involves having a lagoon that can hold this cleaned water and then be land-applied, where you then spray it onto the land. We would probably irrigate. be land-applied, where you then spray it onto the land. We would probably irrigate our barley and our hops and our wheat with it. We don't prefer to go that way. That is just one way that we know is feasible. What we would prefer to do is trench and put it into a lake that's on the property called Donovan Lake. It has fish in it. We've talked with the, these people about it. They say that there, no harm will come. The water's incredibly clean. Again, I want to emphasize, for the sake of everybody in the room, this is, we're at the conceptual stage. We will not be able to install this thing without meeting all of the most stringent guidelines federally, state, locally. This thing, we will not be allowed to pollute. We don't desire to pollute. We want to be green. We intend us to be an incredibly green plant. So what they're telling me is, right now, they're working with a brewer in upstate New York, and in upstate New York has extremely stringent water quality standards for wastewater, and they are putting it into a lake, and then it's overflowing into a watershed. So we are hoping and anticipating that that will be what we're able to do. Consequently, the cost of this particular unit is over a half million dollars. So this isn't a piece of junk. This isn't something that's not sophisticated. We are confident that, after working with this company and learning more about it and talking with the local government, that we will be able to meet your standards, hopefully exceed your standards, and nobody will have anything to worry about as far as brewery wastewater. As far as traffic, obviously, a big concern. We have not done a formal traffic study. We have used the information that was out there now, and I'll just throw some of these numbers out here. Probably the most important thing that we would like to convey is that it's come to our understanding that MoDOT intends to completely repave and do safety improvements to Highway DD from Highway 64 all the way to Highway 94. I know that some of the concerns we've heard involve the condition of Highway Double D and the safety therein, and it's our understanding that that is going to be greatly improved before we are ever open. Also, Benny Road was just repaved, about 75% of the piece of Benny Road where our customers might drive. We did some volume numbers. Again, I'm just being completely transparent. These are numbers that we came up with based on traffic studies that had been done by MoDOT and what we think will be a number of cars and trucks. If 100% of our volume went through only one route, so this should be a highball, in our opinion. If 100% of our volume during the highest time went through only one route, and that route was Highway DD between Dyer and Benny Road, it should be a 3.3% increase. If 100% of our volume went from 64 to Dyer, that would represent a 1.3% increase. This is because Dyer Road is a major cut-through, and the number of cars per day drops past Dyer Road. If all of our traffic went on Highway D between DD and Z, it would represent a 2.6% increase, and if 100% of our volume went on Highway Z between N and D, it would represent a 1.9% increase. This time, that is all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions?
Are you, are you designing this project with the intention of ultimately brewing all of your beer in the country here, ultimately, at some point?
No, sir.
No?
No, sir. We currently have a relationship with a brewery in La Crosse, Wisconsin, that we rent time on, and I operate, and we brew Krefteg Lager and Krefteg Light in bottles and cans and kegs up there. Just to be quite frank, we don't make a whole heck of a lot of kegged Krefteg Lager and Krefteg Light, and it is more of an annoyance than anything, and we do intend on bringing that volume to this brewery and make the kegs of Krefteg Lager and Krefteg Light in our place. But it's not even in the hundreds. It's a very small amount. I wish it was greater, but it's not.
But not the bottles or cans?
No, sir. And our brewery will not be capable of making bottled beer. We won't have the equipment, which is valued in the millions of dollars, so it's not like a quick thing that you could add to a plant. We will have a can line that's capable of making 12-ounce cans, but it's not capable of making 30-packs or 12-packs, or any carton for that matter. It'll literally make can-exposed four-packs or six-packs of 16-ounce or 12-ounce cans in a tray, which is a corrugated, low-sided tray, just to help you carry the case.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. What's next?
Hi, I'm, again, I'm Rod Kozinski. I'm the architect of the property. I primarily specialize in residential and equestrian architecture, which I think is how I got involved, and Billy invited me to be part of this project. I'll be honest, it's my first brewery, but that's why we had the technical guy here to help me get through the technical aspects of it. And I was kind of surprised that I was invited to come just to answer some of these questions, and it had gotten controversial, I had heard, but now being here, I'm glad I don't design cell towers. So barns are just fine. So I just wanted to start out by relaying how my first interaction with Billy and his family, when he invited me to come out here and initially express his concept for this project. He gave me a tour of the property, and I had written down some stuff from those me, I write down quotes, sorry, I'm quoting you, from that meeting, and several times, he reiterated about not changing the character of this land. And I think that's another reason why he chose me, because he wants this to remain an agricultural-looking property, and hence the barn-style architecture. You can see a lot of modernist breweries popping up all over the place. I'm sure there's a bunch in, in St. Louis, too, but he called me and said, "Can we do a brewery inside of a barn?" And I said, "Sure." You know, we just have to know the program. And so we threw together this initial program. Mark and I worked really closely with all of his consultants, trying to figure out how many square feet we would need to do the capacity that he is. And again, I know it's been reiterated a lot of times here, this is at an early, early conceptual phase, based on the data that we have and some square footages that we know can accomplish what he's trying to accomplish brewing beer. To be honest, the two boards you see up there, pages one and two, that I submitted for the conceptual review, were what we sent in the application. The renderings and the pictures, I put together over the last week because of all of the discussion that was going around, that we felt it was prudent to get some of this information out there about what this was actually going to be. It wasn't part of the original application here, and that's why I brought copies for everybody, because we wanted to show what this, what this building could be like and what the look could be like. And to be honest, you guys have seen this before his family has seen it. I haven't even had a time, I was gonna bring these out here. I was planning on showing it to him tomorrow at a meeting, but we decided to disseminate this information to sort of get people on a level that was a little more comfortable with what this, this project would be, because it's hard to tell from a floor plan, excuse me, a floor plan. And I'd like to address in the floor plan, one question you had about the height being 31 feet. That was, I had put that on the application, because in that agricultural zoning, the height limit was 40 feet on the current zoning in that area. So I wanted to sort of indicate that we aren't even reaching some of the heights that other barns could be. And then, the distance, there is, is a site map. To the closest structure, I don't, it's not a habitable structure, it's a barn, is the one to the north, and it's actually 806 feet, from our closest corner of our building to the closest corner of that barn. I'm sorry, I didn't do the, the math to that house on the south, but I believe that's further than the 800 feet.
I did, and it was a thousand.
Okay, okay, so, yeah, so, so just to answer those two questions there. In terms of the architecture, I think it's pretty apparent we decided to go with a barn-style, and this, this all sort of generated from ideas and concepts that Billy had brought up in our initial discussions. Obviously, the rich German heritage. I started looking, and there's a lot of examples on the, on the first board here, of traditional, let's see here.
Turn that up.
Some of the, some of the images here, this imagery in this, in this page here on sheet two.
Why don't you put up the other one, the bigger picture?
Well, yeah, and then this is, these are my renderings. These are the proposed building. So I wanted to show, these are traditional German barns that I started to research, because I've never built a German barn. So I wanted to find an architecture that fit into the landscape, really approachable. There's a lot of tactile materials that, that, that I think are approachable by the, by the public. It's not an industrial, cold-looking structure. And then these are my concept for what this building could be. And, and again, as he alluded to, it's not one single contiguous large building. It's, it's broken up, while there are large spaces inside to handle the actual applications of beer. From the outside, it looks like a small collection of little barn buildings that possibly could have been built up over years. And that was the concept behind it. Keep it so that it didn't change the character of the land and kind of meld it in there. The situation, where we situated the building, we walked the site. I walked it with Billy several times, trying to decide where the best place to put this thing was. Obviously, everybody would agree that the pond is kind of the aesthetic monument of that site, and so we wanted that to become the focal point of this building, as far as like the patrons coming there and being able to enjoy the pond, sit there, have a beer, enjoy food, look over the water, be a real destination. You know, it's, it's gotta be someplace that people want to come to and enjoy, and so the concept is also to protect it. The, the land as it sits right now and looks right now is actually the part that makes this successful. If we change that, we lose, we lose it. There are topo maps that we have, but those were not part of the conceptual application. Where we nestled this is actually starting to go down the hill into the pond, so that it actually sits down in a lower depression on the property. If you look on the road, let me pull this one back up. Hold that one a second. Oh, wait, it's this one. The road coming up to the building is actually a ridgeline. It's the highest point of the land. So as we come down off the side, we're nestled between the highest point and the, and the pond, and so that, that also diminishes the visual impact that may be seen from any property, but except for this small gap here, which we'll fill in, there really is no prop, line of sight from off the property that the building could be seen. That was also intentional. My idea is that, as you come onto this property, you don't really see anything at first, and it's kind of, you experience it as you come in. We're gonna have the hops and, and the, you have corn, too?
Barley.
Barley growing there, so it's part of the experience, part of the learning experience. You come onto the property, you, you get through there, and then you see this barn structure off to the side, and you kind of experience it as it opens up, and you come around the corner. And again, we're keeping all the other amenities on there, the pond. There's an existing arena, which I found out is kind of a, an iconic place for people to ride in the, in the community. That's staying. And, and really sort of make this thing look like it had been here for, it could have been here 100 years ago. That's kind of the concept for the building. The other side of my presentation was, was showing you guys these conceptual drawings, and as I said, they're sort of really preliminary in the sense of, there will be minor adjustments to this as we determine the exact spaces we need inside, but overall, the size and the shape and the form will remain the same. I think that's all I have, is an overview. I had a video that I have out there. I know a lot of people have seen it. And we have it queued up. Is there somebody who's, can play the video up there? These are the same as the still images that we took here, and I kind of just put it together. I don't know, I have fun with this little production software I got. So there's a commercial for me, so you could skip forward a little bit if you wanted to. But I did this so that you could kind of see how you would approach this building as a, as a, as a patron. These are some of the houses that I've worked on. I do more traditional architecture, and again, that's, yeah, you can scroll. That was one of my horse barns. Horses are a big part of my, my life these days. So here we go. And I think this will really give you a sense about how this feels as you come onto here. And this is completed. I mean, this is what we're visioning this to be when it's done. These are the fields with barley and hops growing on either side. There's the existing arena on your left. There's already those existing structures there for observing any equine activities. And as you come around, you kind of get a sense of the pond down there, you know, that spectacular view. We, these are the 100 parking spaces. We kind of base that off of some stuff with the occupancy, and I can go into that a little bit. This tree right here, I love this tree. This is existing tree. There's a big pinyon oak tree there that's already there, and when I saw that, I was like, we can't lose that. So basically, this circle is around the tree itself, and that's an existing tree we will protect. Oh, Mark alluded to those. Those are the silos that we'll have. The idea is to sort of wrap those in sort of a stone element, as if they were leftover from an old age, like a silo that had been repurposed. And then again, some of the architecture over there in the courtyard plays off of the, the silo concept. And then, going around the side here, I widened the, the deck area out, because from this side, you can actually observe some of the equine activity, if there were something going on on that side, so they could move people over to the edge. And of course, those spectacular west sunsets, looking over that lake. So that was really the focus, which also is down the hill, looking over the lake, and so that'll minimize any noise impact. It's kind of sheltered by the building itself. And so just the natural way it's situated kind of isolates it from, you know, affecting the neighbors too much. So I really would like to sort of answer questions if you guys have some direct stuff about the specifics of the building, because I'll ramble on if, and talk about it too long. So if anybody has any questions.
Anyone have any questions?
What? Okay, come on.
We got a lot of people in this room.
Okay.
Let me, let me just, real quick, the parking lot's only 105 spaces or something of that magnitude. Are you planning on having, or opening up for weddings and receptions and, and things of that nature?
Yes. So the occupancy that we kind of based it on, and this came from very early discussions, was that they would like to be able to host, and this is a big wedding, a 500-person wedding. That is a big building to put 500 people inside of a building, and it was determined, as we started working through this, what if that wedding were not all indoors? If they had something like that, you pull a special event permit, and you put tents up. So the, the interior portions of the space, based on building code, with, with the movable seating, would allow for 15 square foot per person. So we did, it's roughly 250 people. I think actually, the square footage came out 244, so I rounded it up a little bit. And then the deck outside is about the same. So...
Are you gonna bus the people in then? Because if you got 500 people coming to the wedding, and 100 parking spots, it doesn't really work out.
Yeah, yes. If, if you've ever been, I've, many of my equestrian facilities have been used for large events. Valet parking and busing are always part of an event when it's 500 people. I mean, I can't say always, but most of the time in the events I've been. Usually, there are special event permits that are pulled for something like that, where you even have to have traffic control and stuff like that, when there's that much anticipated. But that would be a unique situation that is outside of what, we'd like it to be able to host that, if those events were available, but it's not the primary focus of the facility.
And again, I'm, I'm asking these questions, because I'm trying to
Yep, I understand.
from your, from your neighbor's perspective.
Yep, yep.
When they hear 500, if I heard 500, you know, living close to it, I'd be concerned, well, where, where are all these cars gonna, what are you gonna do with all the cars?
Right, well, so if you, if you, if you had 500 people, and, and let's just say three people were in each car, you know, you're, you know, you're, what's that?
This is Missouri. We put two people in the car.
Okay, well, yeah.
We're not into that mass transit too much.
If you're going, I, I would say, like, if you're going to a wedding or an event, you would probably, you would probably, but not everybody, I admit. I'm just saying averaging. I'm just saying averaging. If you're going to a wedding, I mean, yeah, there'll be the single guys, the bachelors going by themselves and driving their car. I get it. But, but basically, the parking spaces that I allotted for were based on other projects that I've done where it's kind of off the occupancy itself. So, you know, you have so many parking spaces per 1,000 square feet, type of thing. And it varies from municipality to municipality. There are averages, and so that's where I went off of, is just our occupancy. And, again, it's at the very early conceptual phases.
Right.
And so there's a lot still yet to be determined, and it's my understanding that during the zoning portion of the process, many of those things will be vetted out and have to be clarified and, and those sort of things.
And, and just to be clear, I really think that if you have a 500-person event, which would be unique... would be unique, and only 100 spaces for the parking lot, there would be a valet service there, parking cars, and then parking cars on the grass, not necessarily in the parking lot.
Okay. That's how I was getting at. I just wanted to, I wanted you to say you were going to, that we're going to be onsite. They're not going to be somewhere else.
Right.
And that's fine.
Well, it's 200 acres, so yeah, we definitely keep it onsite.
All right. The hours of operation, 11 o'clock, granted, I understand that, and I asked that question specifically how far away the neighbors were, but up till 11 o'clock during the week, I understand on Fridays and Saturdays, sure. But I think something, you know, 9:00 or so during the week, Sunday through Thursday, would certainly alleviate a lot of concerns about traffic, late-night traffic, and the ability to continue the party too late into the evenings. It's just something I think that you should seriously consider is cutting back on the number of hours. Come up with something that you can work with, or, because you really don't want us deciding for you. It's your business plan. I'm just telling you, I have concerns about 11 o'clock all the time.
Well, again, I agree with you. Definitely something we would consider. You know, our main priority, a huge priority for us, is going to be working with our neighbors and the people in the community to make this a win-win situation for everybody. So, you know, if at least, you know, we don't have anything going on outside because there's noise or something like that, and we just take it inside, we consider that, you know, shutting anything down outside that might be making some noise at a decent hour. And yeah, we consider making adjustments and being very flexible on things like that.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thanks.
Now, we'll open the public hearing.
Get ready.
So...
Line up.
Line up.
Don't sit in your seats. Come up and line up.
Line up in the aisle.
Behind the guy in the white here, I guess.
Come on up.
Come on up.
Go on.
Come on. Okay, raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you'll tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in these proceedings under the pains and penalties of perjury?
I do.
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Steve Summerkamp, and my family lives at 4313 Diana Lane, Wentzville, Missouri. Our property directly adjoins, man, sorry. My property directly adjoins the northeast corner of the Blue Hair and Plo Club, being discussed as part of this process. First, I want to thank all the commissioners for allowing us to have some time. Although I'm just a single voice at the microphone, obviously, there's a few other people that want to talk, I'm not alone. In fact, I'm standing here representing other people, and I'd really like the commission to acknowledge their presence. And I'd like to have all those concerned citizens that are here tonight stand up and be acknowledged by the commission that, to recognize I'm not here by myself. I'd also like to ask the staff how many letters of opposition and concern they've received since this has been announced.
We have that as a matter of record.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that.
We have it right here.
Has it been said, how many?
We can count them, but there's...
A lot.
A lot.
A lot? Okay. That'll suffice. I don't have any slideshows or videos or anything like that. What I do have is questions, and I don't feel like I've gotten a lot of answers. We've seen renders, and it's a beautiful building, an absolutely gorgeous building. But the thing about it is, is we're talking about a concept plan for a brewery and a distillery. And that's their words, that's not mine. It's a brewery. We have questions specifically about light pollution, noise, odors, safety, impacts on traffic, water consumption, wastewater disposal, trash, recycling, brewery waste. We've seen a lot of renderings, vision, charm about a farm brewery. We haven't seen any facts, data provided, specific information reports. All we've heard is, well, we don't think that's going to be a concern. We don't think that's an issue. We've addressed all of the community's concerns. Let me just say, I don't believe you, and no, you haven't addressed our concerns. That's why we're here. And I think by evidence of how many people are here tonight, I hope that is evident to the commission. We're here to discuss a brew house, and I'd like to just ask the basic question, what is a brew house? I know the county staff went over it a little bit. It's a brand-new definition, as he said. And it's the distilling and brewing of beer for on- and off-site consumption. That sounds exactly like a brewery to me. It doesn't sound like a brew house, it sounds like a brewery. And maybe it was just a technical word that had to be used for it, but the first two items are, it's a brewery and it's a distillery, first and foremost. And the way that I read the zoning change was that nothing else matters because those are the only two things, that's the only thing that has to be there. Everything else is just an accessory use. Yeah, they've got nine other accessory uses that they're listing, but first and foremost, it's a brewery. By the county's own definition, a brewery is an industrial process. Let me repeat that. It's an industrial process. It's not something quaint, it's not something little, it's an industrial process. Beer brewing is the manufacturing process. It's a food-related one, yes, but it's really not much different than making any other product, a refrigerator, a car, a plastic molding injection. It's a manufacturing industrial process. I reviewed the county zoning ordinance, and there are no other industrial or manufacturing processes or operations that are allowed in an agricultural district, none, under any circumstance, not even a cereal factory or an ethanol plant. And both of those are directly related to agriculture. The microbrewery definition, which only allows for on-site consumption, isn't even permitted in an agricultural district. It has to be in the AT district. Yet somehow, a brewery, well, a brew house, is allowed, at least it is now. This definition didn't even exist until recently. I think that was pointed out by one of the commissioners at the very get-go. And the change allowed for this to be a permissible use in a commercial and industrial district. I get that, that makes a lot of sense to me. But it was also made a permissible use, permissible conditional use in agricultural district, and that I don't understand. And that's one of my questions is, how did this happen and why did this happen? It sure seems like this was made specifically for one person. And I think Mr. Godfrey even said, we went directly to our counselor, he directed us to the community staff, and that's how this got done. And we're here essentially two months after this got changed, and we have a CUP application that is almost verbatim exactly what the changes that were made for in the ordinance. As the commission is fully aware, there is a section in the agriculture and AT districts for conditional uses. But somehow, when this change got made, most of the guidelines and requirements, regulations and restrictions associated with those conditional uses got stripped away and are not required for a brew house. My question is, is how is this brewery, how does it fit with the county's current zoning or the master plan that's set in place? It's supposed to be the guidepost for how this county grows and what they do. It just doesn't seem to fit right here in a rural agricultural area. It's been stated that this is going to be a 2,500-barrel facility. I think we've already heard that it's capable of being 7,500 barrels. You know, as a context, my understanding by looking at some lists are, if they were to reach that 7,500-barrel mark, that would make them the sixth-largest brewery in the St. Louis metropolitan area by volume. So, the sixth-largest brewery...
Please.
Would be in an agricultural rural area. Not only that, it would directly adjoin one of the county's prized jewels, Bromelsec Park. It adjoins Bromelsec Park. How does the county feel about having a brewery right next to one of their county parks?
A minute, sir.
Yes.
A minute.
All right, I'm in trouble then. One of the biggest concerns is not only the immediate impact, what's the future impact? What does this look like in five years, in 10 years, in 20 years? Craft beer growth has expanded dramatically over the last few years. Isn't that impact on a community that's already existing just as important as this immediate initial phase that they're talking about? If this was going to be a small, minuscule brewery, why are 244 acres, when you include both this one and the next CUP application, being requested? That doesn't seem small to me. Sorry, I'm trying to jump through. If this goes through, we can't take it back. It's there forever, regardless of who owns it. So, what I'm asking is that we very diligently and deliberately think about the ramifications of approving this CUP and how little restrictions we have set up to guide that, that once it's done, because of the way the application has been and all the uses that have been requested, there's a lot that can go on there. How is that growth going to be restricted?
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm going to wrap up. My question is, is this county willing to put their stamp of approval on, based upon the limited information we've given? There's been no reports, no studies, it's been a lot of, we think, I don't know about you, but I'm not. I don't know how to think about it, but I'd like to be able to make a really informed decision about the way I feel about it, and right now, I don't feel like I have the answers to do that. And that's what I'd like to see is more specific answers to allow us to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You can use that right there.
Can you hear me on this?
Yes, ma'am. Do you solemnly swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in these proceedings under the pains and penalties of perjury?
I do.
Please state your name and address for the record.
It is Mary Jo Dixon. I live at 11 Country Life Lane.
Go ahead, Ms. Dixon.
Okay. My house is located one street over from Benny Road on a 12-home dead-end street that's quiet and a quaint street, appropriately called Country Life Lane. I would like to discuss how this proposed brew house slash petting zoo development will negatively impact our home values and the enjoyment of our homes. People move out to this area for the quiet serenity and country beauty that Defiance has always been noted for. They move out here for the peace and quiet, not to live next to a development that will attract people from the opening of it at 9:00 a.m. to the closing at 11:00 p.m. Our family chose to move out to this area for the strict zoning that has helped this area hold its high real estate values, but most of all, to get out into the country and enjoy the natural beauty and serenity that is highly sought after in this fast-paced world. What attracts people to this area to live is the enjoyment of being surrounded by nature. And instead of homes, traffic lights, and the hustle and bustle of urban city living, you can enjoy seeing and listening to animals that surround your home, looking up at the night sky and seeing a million stars because of all the lights, highly, because of, because all the lights of highly overdeveloped areas don't block our views. We enjoy to the fullest the quiet, peaceful life Defiance offers us. This development will take most of this away from us by heavy continuous traffic. Don't kid yourself, this is not just a brewery, it's a bar. This home-to-table feel-good restaurant concept is a joke. When it's been discussed by Mark, as he just permanent, just now said to you guys, and his exact quote, if I am not butchering it, "if we're going to have some food at the restaurant," was the exact part, "it's to make us feel good." So, this development will take most of this away by heavy continuous traffic, as I said, with a petting zoo, grants farm feel, and continuing through with a bar, distillery, brew house, restaurant, wedding and special event venues that stay open to 11:00 if approved. Don't forget, we're talking about motorcycles and cars and lights being turned on at 11:00 to leave as well. None of the residents in Defiance are naive enough to think that this area would not change or give way to progress over the years. However, none of us thought that the strict zoning laws that have existed to protect our property values and overall appeal in this part of the county for years would be radically changed in a clandestine fashion that would allow a full-scale brewery, petting zoo, museum, gift shop, wedding and special events venue, as well as a bar and, yes, restaurant with the capability to seat 500 people, half inside, half outside, to be built in our backyards. Let's be very clear here, no matter how beautifully you wrap that package, it's still a brewery. A brewery in a residential and agriculturally-zoned area that does not have the roads to handle the amount of traffic is going to be generated, that is going to be generated with intoxicated drivers who don't necessarily have respect for our gorgeous surroundings, is not what fits into this area and would not appeal to the future of any homeowner. Then you add a mini grants farm, petting zoo, outdoor bar, dining area that sits 250 people outside, complete with bands, and the noise and smells that become a negative nuisance to everyone who is living in this area, not to mention, and again, the extreme traffic this will create. It will affect our enjoyment of our homes. This development not, has not only has to be open from 9:00 in the morning to 11:00, but as you mentioned, seven days a week. So, if any of you are wondering who the people are that are living in this area, let me tell you who we are, that this directly affects. There are not 17 homes. That might be on one side, but it's not in this entire development. There are 32 homes directly impacted, existing permitted properties, property values that come to 22 million, aggregate home property values for those properties that connect to the proposed project. Now, if you add homes directly across the street from this development, that grows to approximately 32 million in property value. If you add two to three radius blocks of Benny Road site, the aggregate property values are estimated at approximately 50 million. These are residential and agricultural properties by permanent residents, property taxpayers, not wealthy landowners that use the property part-time and return to their St. Louis County homes. At the end of the day, change is inevitable. However, that potential change should be conducted in a fair and lawful manner with the citizens of Defiance's best interest in mind. Our concerns are that this project seems to be getting fast-tracked through the approval process. The normal impact studies are all deemed unnecessary. I do not think at this point they should be overlooked. I think at this point, they are mandatory and should be looked at. Why are the impacts of this development of no concern to our living conditions of our homes? All the publicity makes this sound like it's a done deal. Is anyone else going, is anything else going to be piggybacked off this development as well down the road? Potentially more breweries or distilleries jump on board? No. No one has ever asked any local residents if there was anything they could do to help make this project more desirable. The old saying rings true here, not in my backyard. This development looks good at a distance, but when it's in your backyard with all the noise, traffic, light pollution, sewage and water problems, to name just a few, it's a problem. When Mr. Bush was asked this past Sunday, "why didn't he develop this brewery on his 400-acre property off Highway D?", his answer was, "that property is for my family's enjoyment." Well, I'm here to speak for my family's enjoyment that will be negatively affected by this development. So, is this development saying our homes we cherish aren't important? Why are we considering putting in a commercially-high-volume establishment in a very quiet neighborhood in an agricultural-zoned area? I'm almost done. Where are our local elected officials when we need help in protecting our hard-earned property values? We, like most of our neighbors around us, were completely blindsided by the potentially full-scale brewery, petting zoo in our backyards. The fact that property owners... The fact that property owners within 500 feet of this property were only given a 15-day notice for a development of this magnitude is inexcusable in my mind. We are one street over, and half the neighbors on our street receive letters, while the rest of us receive notice word-of-mouth through neighbors and some not even three days before tonight's meeting. We are positive there are many neighbors not even aware of this project, unless, of course, they watched the local TV media blitz these last few nights stating it was a done deal and going into construction as early as this fall. We are employing you to slow down this process at the very least by delaying voting of this until next month's meeting. It is reckless to not thoroughly weigh out all environmental and economy and economic impacts this will have on our community. There are way too many changes and pieces to the conditional use permit that have been conveniently omitted. You are our protection against this sort of project. We need you to have all the validation and certainty around the impact of our homes and property before the Planning and Zoning Commission can in good conscience vote for a recommendation to approve this conditional use permit 1812 and 1813. We are hoping you vote no to this brewery tonight. Thank you for your time in this matter.
Do you solemnly swear I affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in these proceedings under the pains and penalties of perjury?
I do.
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Bill Carrier, and I live at 4310 Diana Lane. My wife Kathy and I live at that address which borders the proposed site for the manufacturing facility and 500-seat beer hall and restaurant. We thank the commission for the opportunity to express our opposition to this proposal. We have significant concerns regarding the noise created by both the manufacturing and in-keeping operations of this facility. During a recent informal community meeting with the William K. Bush Brewing Company, it became clear that they have not conducted a scientific noise analysis as part of their development plan. Their subjective assessment, and I repeat that, their subjective assessment is simply, "We don't think that'll be a problem." With all due respect to their team, while they're great businessmen and great brewers, there's not an acoustic engineer amongst them. I'm an engineer. I'm not an acoustic engineer, but I can tell you, it's a very complex discipline, one that is the domain of subject matter experts, and detailed analysis and study is required for folks to truly understand it. We believe an independent scientific assessment of all potential noise sources, their magnitude, and their frequency and length of occurrence is required prior to deciding on this permit application. Those study results must be compared to the limits set by the St. Charles County Code, Article 8, Offenses Against Public Peace, specifically Sections 210.200 and 210.205. These regulations apply to residential areas and prohibit anyone from operating audio equipment that can be clearly heard by the human ear at a distance of more than 75 feet from the source. If the typical noises emanating from the brew house can be heard in the surrounding properties, then the brew house will be in frequent violation of the code, albeit in the matter of, or to the letter of the law for those cases involving music and amplified sound, but to the general intent of the law for all other noises. I'm not proud of it, but I once lived adjacent to a bar, and I know firsthand the type and magnitude of noise such businesses produce. There is significant noise due to deliveries, trash pickup, patrons arriving and departing and holding their own special event in the parking lot, and other special events, sanctioned special events from outdoor bands, and then to the occasional police call. The brew house will also generate industrial sounds through delivery trucks, externally mounted HVAC, and other brewing-related equipment and facility maintenance. Studies show that people talking and shouting produce sound levels between 30 and 60 decibels. Large trucks produce sound levels between 60 and 80 decibels. Roof-mounted industrial chillers produce levels between 85 and 100 decibels, and amplified music can easily reach 100 to 125 decibels. Given the nonlinear nature of the decibel scale and the limited ability to attenuate such levels through some sort of means, these noises will likely have an adverse impact on those living nearby. The frequency and length of occurrence of these sounds represents a significant portion of an average week. It appears the facility will operate from 10:00 AM until 11:00 PM, seven days a week, not counting the times when deliveries or outdoor maintenance activities will occur. I ask you, when do we get a break from this, as neighbors and as local residents? We believe that the brewing company's estimate of three to four outdoor events a year is very low, as they will make every accommodation of clients and patrons to maximize their profits. You don't build a 250-seat outdoor facility with the intention of not filling it as much as you possibly can. It's just counter to good business practice. Comparative data should be gathered from similar operations, such as wineries, wedding and event venues, et cetera, to determine the overall potential for outdoor activity noise. During our meeting with the brew company, we learned that their subjective assessment of noise was solely, solely based on their current estimate of three delivery trucks per week, which as some have mentioned, does not appear consistent with the planned extent of their brewing and in-keeping operations. All these noises are in stark contrast to the natural sounds we enjoy today. Could I get the plot put up there real quick?
One minute, sir.
Okay. If you remember the plot, there was a round pond. Well, our lot is about at the 11 o'clock position from that round pond.
There, it's up there, man.
There you go. So if you take the round pond and you go 11 o'clock, that's our house right there. In the fall and the winter, we hear the geese on that pond all the time, just to give you an idea of the type of sound that can be heard from that kind of distance. We like the geese, right? They're not gonna, to, to change their operation based on our complaints anyway, but the point is, you know, distances, sound can travel over great distances. The only noise abatement planned by the brewing company is a small row of young trees on the northwest edge of their property. Civil engineering studies show that trees and other foliage only reduce noise levels by 30% at most, excuse me. Thus, it appears the current brewing company noise abatement plan is woefully insufficient. What do we do with the other 70% of this new noise coming into our neighborhoods? What do we do with that? We live with it. Again, we formally request an independent scientific study to properly assess and effectively mitigate the noise impact of this facility. A similar study is required to assess the potential impact and mitigation of objectionable odors exhausted by the brew house and its associated subsystems. Mr. Gottfried talked about the wart boiling, which is true, but wart boiling is only one source of objectionable odors. Storage of grain before brewing, storage of brewing byproducts and waste prior to disposal or used by animals, wastewater treatment, and trash from the beer hall and restaurant are all additional potential odor sources. We have to scientifically evaluate and demonstrate that the brew house will not violate St. Charles County Code, Section 375.700, peace disturbance, specifically Item A1E, creating a noxious and/or offensive odor. Again, thank you for listening and for your consideration of our views as equal stakeholders in this process, both under the law and with shared interest in the future of St. Charles County. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Do you solemnly swear I affirm that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in these proceedings under the pains and penalties of perjury?
I do.
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name's Dave Bergoff. I live at 4479 Wilson Road. My property connects directly to this proposed attachment. Really, my concerns is gonna be, the topic is about the water usage, water treatment. Some of these things were not known to us prior to this, and it was discussed, you know, by them, which is very good to hear on that. When we had the meeting last Sunday, Mr. Bush, Mr. Gottfried came and talked to us in the park. We appreciate that. At that point in time, you know, they had just figured out about this second aquifer and looked at options of being able to do this for the water and water supply. We went a little bit further than that. We got ahold of the PSW number two and said, "Hey, what's the option of being able to get to city water?" And they said, "There's basically two options. You can come off Highway D, or you can come off Highway Double D." The line from Highway Double D, in their opinion, was not gonna be adequate to supposedly supply this level of water at the 2,500 barrels of beer rate. But they said that the line off of Highway D is a possibility to run and come across there. It'd be, have to run about a 4,000-foot line to be able to get there, and they could actually have city water onboard. Would like for the council here to actually consider, you know, is doing the well and the possibility that, an option, or at least let's look at the option of also doing city water. The other part of this is, that goes along with this is actually the treatment of waste. I'm actually shorting mine up so I can get this done faster. There hasn't been any study on what, how much this waste is, and, but they did discuss it again this evening. So at least they are looking at, you know, what's a good way to be able to take this waste, both at the level of the brewing process, as well as the human and the trash and those kind of waste. Very good to hear that at least he's been doing, being looked at, and we'd like to have that as a restriction in saying, hey, these absolutely have to be done. What I've seen in the proposal and what I saw on, on the permit area, there was nothing that even addressed that, other than the accounts. The staff said, "We think it's good." You know, I'm sorry, I'm sure you heard the theme, "We think," here in this, tonight. So basically, what we're asking for here is, let's get, and you've heard this theme, is getting a real third-party investigation on what this is gonna be for the water usage and things along those nature, the treatment and everything else, and what is gonna be the real water use requirement. Mr. Klinghamer, you made a comment about asking about how's this going to be and how much water usage is gonna be. My sister lives out in Fort Collins, Colorado. Fort Collins, Colorado has two fairly significant, very, very nice microbreweries out there. One's New Belgian, the other one's Odell's. Odell started off as a very small thing. It's, it's still a small microbrewery in the stages of things. I've gone there, it's along the same line which you're proposing. It's a beautiful building. You know, they have a nice little outdoor area, you can come up there, tap house and everything else. When they started in Odell's, you know, beyond the fact that he started initially at a grain elevator, and he moved, the first time he moved at this place in Fort Collins, he did a 8,000-square-foot building. In that area, he was able to produce 8,300 barrels of beer a year. Now, that was in 2000, in 1999, he constructed that. In 2009, he expanded to a 45,000-square-foot facility. A little bit bigger, but like you were saying, it doesn't take much of an increase in volume and size. He went from doing the 8,300 barrels of beer a year to now, in 2017, he did 125,000 barrels of beer. What is the water impact going to be in the waste treatment if you can have this kind of growth? I don't see anything in this, this, you know, this process here or this standard that is going to prohibit them from growing beyond this. We'd like to have some limit set on what is the max amount of barrels per year that can be produced on this site. If it exceeds this, let's take this to an off-site industrial plant, keep your building as your face and have it as that, but let's take the high production if it gets above, you know, some number that can be agreed upon by staff that makes sense for this kind of property usage. Alright, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Do you solemnly swear I affirm that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in these proceedings under the pains and penalties of perjury?
I do.
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Thomas P. Dugan Jr. I work, I, sorry, I live at 2 Country Life Lane, Defiance, Missouri. The property I live on was, was bought by my parents in 1977. We started construction on a house designed by my father in 1978, and we moved in two days before New Year's, 1979. Go forward about 40 years, my wife and I just completed a battle, about two years' worth of trying to get our house back, our family property, from an unscrupulous, reinforced mortgage holder, and get our own mortgage on the place, which we finally successfully did, so it's back in the family. I'm just telling you this because I want you to understand how important this property is to me and my family. Having said that, what I want to talk about is the restaurant portion of this development, something that's kind of been glossed over in the presentation so far, but in their own paperwork, they are presenting a 250-seat restaurant, and that's the inside seating, plus 250 outside seating. I work for Washington University, I'm in the Information Technology Department, but I support the food service operations at Washington University, so I do know a bit about my, what I'm talking about. I'll also tell you that I have a degree in engineering, so I do a lot of math. I understand normal people aren't into math, so I'll try to eliminate as much of that as possible. Having said that, there aren't a lot of numbers in this presentation about this restaurant. That makes me a little nervous, and, and there wasn't a lot to base my numbers off of. I had to do certain assumptions, but I went ahead and did that. So I based a lot of this on a standard casual dining restaurant, but, you know, this may not actually apply in this case. But, but as one of my predecessors mentioned, nobody opens a facility this size to be unsuccessful. If you have 250 seats, and that's the number I'm gonna work off of, you're planning on filling them, and you're planning on running this as an actual restaurant with the profit. So that's what I'm basing this on. So how many people are gonna work here? By the standards in the restaurant industry, you're probably gonna have 15 waitstaff for 250 tables, five bussers, two or three at your host station, three chefs, I'm sorry, one chef, three cooks, two or three dishwashers, two management on front of a house and back of a house. And what you end up with, if you add all that up, and I'll do it for you, is about 33 to 35 people. Now, why is this important? It's because these people are coming in and out of the facility, they're using Benny Road, alright? Two-lane road, very limited for traffic, and I'll get to more of that in a second. But, you gotta double that because they're coming and going, so 60 trips in and out. And now double it again because restaurants work two shifts, lunch and dinner, alright? You with me so far? So you're talking about 120 trips up and down this road, just for staff. Now, when you talk about the people that are actually going here to eat, standard casual dining restaurant turns the restaurant three times at lunch and two at dinner. So that's five times your seating capacity, possibly 1,250 patrons on a good business day. That's just for 250 seats, by the way. How many cars do these people drive? About 200, about 300-plus by industry standards. As was mentioned earlier, Missourians, there's really two people per car, but we'll go with the larger number. Once again, you gotta double that number because it's, they're coming in and they're going out. So, 600 cars for patrons. What are we up to right now? On a given day, you're increasing the traffic on Benny Road, about 600 cars. You with me so far? Now, I've biked on Benny Road on a Sunday afternoon at noon, I've done it many, many times, and you know how many cars I've seen, three, usually just three. I'd also like to state that I've never seen an 85-foot trailer come down from Highway D to Wilson Road on Benny Road because it's impossible. They can't make the turn at the low-water bridge, they know not to go that way, and they don't do it. So, yes, we do see those trucks every once in a while on Benny Road, but not very often. It's not a good road for them, and most of them avoid it. Now, let's just change topics here real quick. Let's talk about water usage. Now thankfully, when I started looking this up, water usage is a very hot topic in the restaurant industry. It's one of their big cost drivers, and especially out west, it's a problem because of water limitations. So there are lots of studies about water usage by restaurants, and here's what they come down to, it's a really nice number to work with because they do it by seat. And the average, the average restaurant in the United States uses 24 gallons a day per seat. So I'll do the math for you. For 250-seat restaurant, that's 6,000 gallons of water. Now, granted, you can do some green initiatives to bring that down, but the best anyone's done is to cut it in half, and that's still 3,000 gallons. Now, I know they're piping their water directly from Lake Michigan, and so they're not really worried about the water usage, but it also increases the amount of gray water. And yes, you can put in gray water systems and deal with that, but the volume is so large that we're talking about a significant problem in water usage and water disposal. Alright, so, my final comments are just this. Restaurant size, 250 seats, and that, as I say, is just half of it, because there's 250 seats outside also. How big is that? Standard Applebee's is 169. Outback Steakhouse, actually, franchise is at 200. And Cracker Barrel, everyone loves Cracker Barrel. And Cracker Barrel, everyone loves Cracker Barrel, 170 is their franchise target, 170 seats. Why is this important? Because those restaurants go in business districts with good traffic patterns and good infrastructure, good water, good waste disposal, and all of those things. This restaurant, which is bigger than all of those that I've just mentioned, would be going on a rural road with well water and septic system. What's more, the 250-seat restaurant would actually be, I believe, the largest restaurant south of Interstate 64 in this area of the county that we're talking about. At 500 seats, if you combine inside and outside, it's almost the largest restaurant in all of St. Charles County. Combined with the brewery that is going to be one of the top, I'm sorry, actually at 2,500 barrels by 2017 numbers, it would be number eight in the entire St. Louis area as far as barrel production. So my question is, why is this thing so large? Why does it have to be such a huge impact on our area? Why does it have to be this big? It's huge, okay? By all of these standards I've just shown you, creates a lot of traffic that's simply not there right now. They haven't given us numbers on current traffic. They haven't given us numbers on all of these things. It's all whitewashed. We really deserve to have the real numbers before this goes forward. I thank you for your time.
You solemnly swear or affirm that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in these proceedings under the pains and penalties of perjury.
Yes, I do.
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Katie Dugan, and my address is Two Country Life Lane. Tom Dugan's my husband. I want to talk tonight about the topic of light pollution. Don't worry, it's one page. I'll be quick. The proposal letter for a conditional use permit 18-12 specifically states that outdoor lighting will follow the guidance of the International Dark Sky Association. Thank you for that. It shows that you already realize the importance of minimizing light pollution in the area of this county. Now, let me tell you why this is important and why you may need to do more. If you Google "places to see the stars in Missouri," the top links all point to the astronomy viewing area in Bromel Sieg Park in St. Charles County. The county parks and recreation department opened the $465,000 astronomy park in 2008. The Astronomical Society of Eastern Missouri has an open house at this site every Friday night, weather permitting. The Parks Department, the Astronomical Society of Eastern Missouri, and the St. Louis Astronomical Society host other events at this site throughout the year. Now, my husband and I don't use the astronomy park much because frankly, we get the same view of the stars from our front yard. Now, I say "front yard" because our house faces south. And in the northern hemisphere, the most of what you want to see through a telescope is to the south. To the southeast in this part of the county, there's a lot of light pollution from the Chesterfield Valley and the southern end of the 94 corridor. So the best patch of dark sky to point a telescope is to the southwest. The reason I bring this up is to the southwest, a little under 3,000 feet from the astronomy viewing area in Bromel Sieg Park, is the site of the proposed brew house. Any light that bleeds upward from this location would impact the viewing there. This is a particularly area of concern on Friday nights when the brew house could be active and well-lit at the same hours the Astronomical Society's open house. We in this area love our stars at night, our sunrises and our sunsets, unspoiled by artificial lights. For us, dark skies are a natural resource. The astronomy viewing area is an important educational resource for the entire St. Louis area, one in which St. Charles County has already made a substantial investment. And I want to also tell you that from our front yard, not only can we see Saturn and Mars and Jupiter and the moon, but to the naked eye, you can actually see the Milky Way, and I think that's fantastic, something that you can't actually put a dollar mark on in terms of property value. If this project goes forward, please be careful to preserve our dark sky resources. That's all I have tonight. Thank you so much for your time.
Okay, before we go further, I've made a list here, light pollution, noise abatement, water issues, traffic, property values, waste, the amount of production of beer and/or spirits, number of employees. So if you sort of skip those points and, but everybody's going to get a chance to address the commission, but we've pretty well got those points covered. So please raise your right hand. You solemnly swear that you will tell the truth, the whole, swear or affirm that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in these proceedings under the pains and penalties of perjury.
I do.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Kendall Schmidt, 3988 Benny Road, Defiance, Missouri.
Go ahead, Mr. Schmidt.
And I can assure you, you won't have to start the clock for my presentation. I'd just like to take a few minutes to relate to you about the past 28 years as a resident of Defiance and 68 years as a resident of New Malle, Defiance area. My family has witnessed the phenomenal growth of the area. Prior to moving to Benny Road four years ago, we, our residence was Highway 94 South down near Defiance. So during that time, we witnessed the infancy and the growth of the wineries throughout the area in Defiance. If anybody here can tell me there was no impact on that area, I can tell them they're wrong. We lived it. We saw the cars. We saw the traffic. We listened to the sirens at 5:30 at night. We had people stop in our driveways, throw trash, and even worse, not make it to the nearest restroom or bathroom where they were headed. So again, the impact is going to be there, and we are concerned about that impact. Beyond that, I know there's a lot of statistics and facts that have been thrown out here, but my major concern is the basic impact traffic-wise on Benny Road. On the west side of Benny, there's two right-angle turns, as someone referenced, almost impassable by a semi. Again, the width of Benny Road, same width as approximately 40-some years ago when it was a gravel road, never been changed. So again, the impact on the roads, the traffic, my major concern, that's really all I have to add to this, and I won't take up any more of your time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. You solemnly swear or affirm that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in these proceedings under the pains and penalties of perjury.
I do.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Josh Waters, 3804 Benny Road.
Go ahead, Mr. Waters.
When my wife and I decided to move to St. Charles County, we found many things appealing about Benny Road. It was rural enough that I could continue living the country lifestyle that I was raised on, yet it was close enough to urbanity that my wife could easily pursue her career goals. There was plenty of space for our children to play freely without many of the worries that come in a more densely populated area. Our youngest child loves riding a bicycle up and down our driveway, but I'm afraid if you issue this conditional permit tonight, this conditional use permit tonight, that's a leisure that we won't be able to let her safely do anymore. The number of cars and commercial vehicles that will be added to Benny Road will only increase the likelihood of being struck by a distracted driver whose vehicle leaves the roadway. The most recent data posted by the Missouri State Highway Patrol Statistical Analysis Center comes from 2016. In 2016, a statewide total of 39,987 people were injured in vehicle crashes. Benny Road, Wilson Road, Highway D, and Double D are classified as two-way undivided roads. Of the nearly 40,000 people injured in crashes, 21,273 were injured on a two-way undivided road. The group of roads in question which will be impacted by Billy Bush's new operation fall into a group that accounted for 53.2% of the crash injuries in Missouri in 2016. Keep in mind, roads like Benny and Wilson aren't even included in this study because they're county roads and not state roads. What does it take to service a motor vehicle crash? At minimum, one ambulance with two paramedics, one fire engine with three firefighters, and one police officer will be dispatched to every motor vehicle crash in the county of St. Charles. This doesn't include the cleanup crew needed. The most likely two types of crash incidents that are likely to happen on the roads in question are, one, a vehicle drifting off the edge of the road where there is no shoulder on any of these roads out there, or, two, a vehicle drifting left of center and striking head-on with another vehicle. A head-on crash at speeds as low as 35 miles per hour will require at least two ambulances, the fire engine, and two or more officers. That's at a minimum. Drifting off the edge of the road out there will most likely result in a rollover, which will require many more resources. So let's take a look at the public services currently available in our area. EMS. St. Charles County Ambulance District currently has ambulance bases in New Malle and at the intersections of Highway N and Hopewell Road. These are the two closest bases that would most likely respond to incidents in the area due to increased traffic. These two bases cover a very large area of citizens. When they are on a call, they are unavailable to a large number of citizens. In rural ambulance calls where a patient is transported, that ambulance is unavailable to the public for no less than one hour and much times many longer. The result is an ambulance being dispatched from a further base for citizens' medical emergencies. Increased response times result in increased injury that is irreversible in many medical cases, such as trauma with loss of blood flow to a limb, stroke, and heart attack. Fire. The New Malle Fire District serves the greater areas surrounding the proposed brew house and restaurant. The Fire District only has one full-time crew on shift at any given date. The full-time crew is supplemented by volunteers who are very few and far between. The Fire District has many more responsibilities than just fighting fires. They respond to more medical calls than most would think. They provide area protection at a crash scene with the fire engine while at the same time cutting a hole in a mangled vehicle to remove an injured passenger. They're responsible for fire inspections in commercial and industrial buildings and grounds, and they host or participate in many community events and programs which promote health and safety. With their high load of responsibility, low number of firefighters, and large area coverage, the New Malle Fire District must frequently call for mutual aid assistance from Wentzville and Cottleville Fire District. This leaves those districts shorthanded of staff and equipment necessary to properly protect their citizens. The risk for fire at a brewery or restaurant alone is a higher possibility than in most settings. When you combine the two on the same property, the risk increases significantly, let alone the whiskey distillery that they've talked about for future expansion. A fire at a proposed establishment like this one would take so many fire resources away from the surrounding communities. Police. The St. Charles County Police Department has primary jurisdiction over the area of proposed establishment and the Missouri Highway Patrol over the highways leading to and from it. County deputies are already stretched thin with basic patrols responding to crimes, providing such services as safety and resource officers for area schools, and responding to highway incidents when the Highway Patrol is preoccupied. I have made several calls over the years to request patrols of Benny Road due to excessive speed, excessive litter, and countless occasions of passing stop-school buses with lights on. I'm always told the same thing, there are not enough resources to add patrols to rural areas. The department already has resources distributed based upon the population of the county. If the county already can't handle what happens on Benny Road and surrounding roads, how will they handle the increased traffic, crashes, and disruptions on-site that will come with this brewery, restaurant, and unlimited expansion in the future? I've only covered three resources that are already stretched thin within our area, but they are major resources to this county's way of life. A much larger area than the rural New Malle-Defiance area will be affected by this proposed establishment. You owe it to this county's citizens to deny this conditional use permit and recommend to the county council in October to deny it as well. Thank you.
You solemnly swear or affirm that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in these proceedings under the pains and penalties of perjury.
I do.
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Chris Wimmer, and I live at 4354 Wilson Road. And quite honestly, a lot of what I have here has been covered, so I'm just going to put in a couple of points that, just to put a picture to things. Water use has been talked about a lot, and I just want to say that we're, put some numbers to it. A really efficient brewery uses seven to 10 gallons of water for every gallon of beer. That's just the brewery. The distilleries can use a lot more. We've heard about the bathrooms, blah, blah, blah. Even if the package sewage treatment plant cleans it up really, really well, it's still got to go somewhere. They talked about spraying it. Spraying is one option. There are times of year when it's illegal to spray, when the ground's frozen, and the spring, when certain insects are emerging. So that's a much more complex situation than we're being led to believe. When it comes to solid waste, again, we've got the restaurant, we've got the potential of 500 people. Someone mentioned all the additional employees. We didn't get to the potential for caterers, the bands, all the other people that'll be coming in and going, using bathrooms. But just the solid waste from just the brewing process, they're considered brewers' spent grains, and it would be at the higher capacity that they're, like everybody says, that's the number we should use because that's where they're headed. It's 120 tons of just barley and, I'm getting confused, but anyway, that's 120 tons of just one part of it. There's another chunk of it that's considered residual or wet brewery wastes, residual yeast, trub, et cetera. That's more tonnage. They got to go somewhere with it. I'd really like to hear them say they're going to bring value to this place. I'd really like to hear about a really nice composting situation where maybe they would share organic compost with the neighbors, really, you know, bring some value to this place. I'm an organic farmer. I have, I supply vegetables to farm-to-table dinners all year long, and I liked hearing what the gentleman with the staff said about farm-to-table dinners, but quite honestly, that's not. When we asked Billy and Mark what their vision was, they did not describe farm-to-table dinner. They did not describe growing food here. It's in their passion, but it's not in their mission. So anyway, I would just like to say it's kind of like the cell tower. It's not the right place.
Thank you, sir. You solemnly swear or affirm that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in these proceedings under the pains and penalties of perjury.
I do.
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Michael Ref. I live at 3939 Benny Road. My property is on the south side of Benny Road, if you can move that just a little bit. My property adjoins Mr. Bush's property, which I think is they're calling the Wilson property. I'm going to omit a lot of the duplication, so please bear with me. One thing that I have absolutely learned by just the conversation here is, no one, I'm going to say, and I don't say no one, a large majority of you may not understand what Benny Road is. May I share this with you, these pictures of Benny Road?
Put them on the...
On here.
Yeah, can I give this copy so you guys can look at it? Just lay it flat.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Which direction?
Do it the way?
Okay. There you go.
Okay. I've got just a couple of views of Benny Road in its totality because without knowing literally what we're talking about, I think there's probably some ideas in your head. I've lived at Benny Road for 14 years. My wife and I bought that property together. We built our home there. We've raised our children there. So we are ground zero for the traffic impact. What I intend to do to share is just the things that haven't been discussed related to the traffic. These are pictures of the actual road. It's a very narrow road. By all accounts, it is a country road in its origin that's been paved over, so much so that you'll find that the road, if you drive down this road, it meanders around many of the country items that were there, a cemetery, jogs and lanes. You'll see 90-degree turns over a culvert with a 10-foot entrance, not to mention entry and exit off of both Highway Double D and D. Entry and exit off of Highway D that is in a blind turn if you're coming from New Malle, turning left, a blind turn. This is exactly a location where one of the buses went off the road during the ice storms a couple of years ago. This is a very dangerous intersection in and of itself, let alone leading up This is a very dangerous intersection in and of itself, let alone leading up to Benny Road. So as you see these pictures here, we did get, we did get our streets repaved. We appreciate that and the coincidence of it. Here is pictures of Benny Road as you're heading from Highway Double D to the proposed site. You notice that there's a thirty-five mile per hour sign. Most people that have cut through to New Melli avoid that completely. That's just a suggestion, I think, on speed. You can see that on each side of these roads, we have no curbs, there's really no shoulders. In a lot of cases, the road just goes off. It drops anywhere from five inches, six inches, to some places in five to seven feet. Some more views. I think this comes back to some of the questions. Will this road support the use of any kind of industrial support, let alone a restaurant? You have ninety-degree turns here. You have switchback here, here, and I'm gonna show you some here in a minute that actually will show the culvert pipe that you have to drive over as well. These are all roads that we commonly drive on, are constantly looking how to pass these roads, and with oncoming trucks, farm equipment, horse trailers, a lot of times these vehicles have to come into oncoming traffic. The road literally was built as a passageway between the two highways. As you get closer to the end of Benny Road, this one here, you can see that there is a culvert bridge. That width between those two spans is very narrow. Many times, two vehicles, I'm just talking passenger cars, can't get over it, let alone commercial trucks of any size, weight, load, or permitted cargo. As you make the turn, this is me making a turn from there, and how you have to make the turn to correct before you can straighten up and get down Benny Road. Here's a picture of that culvert as well. We have no idea what the weight is. To give a depiction of actually the drop-offs on the sides of this road, again, you can see in this instance, it's a couple inches. In this case here, you can see the width of the road, couple inches of lift and drop here. But down the road, my neighbors have a electric junction. It actually drops five to six feet right before its driveway. The other concern that we have is the visibility change as you drive down Benny Road. So what I'm showing you here in this picture here, you can see that? That picture there is the drive from Benny Road up towards the proposed entrance of the brewery site. You can't see oncoming traffic until you get closer to the entrance. In fact, it's actually nearly right at the entrance. So to make a turn out of that traffic lane, to get to turn into that facility is going to be a challenge without major improvements to these roads. Without going into traffic counts because I really don't know if I can fit six to ten people in a car to give you accurate numbers, if it's two people, one people, I'll skip over that piece of it. But the reality is, we've had very little, very little time to go out and get valid information. Why weren't environmental studies prepared and given to us? Why weren't road studies given to us in advance of this to make educated decisions? The permanency of this particular project impacts my family directly, really does. And the value, good, bad, or indifferent, we don't know. We won't know until we have some answers, questions answered. But the last traffic study that we can even find for this road, and I believe we got the information from the county, was nineteen eighty-seven. So if we're willing to use nineteen eighty-seven data to support this program, this project, I think we're not doing ourselves a good service. I couldn't agree more with Mr. Griffin. To give the moral hazard of the traffic study to the applicant doesn't seem very fulfilling to those that want legitimate answers. I think we would want an independent study to give us absolute clarity, and it was done with integrity. Not that we couldn't find that in DNR reports for the water levels or any of the other studies that we're asking for in advance. We just want to be able to be educated, and we want evidence, that's all. That's all we're asking for. The other things that haven't been talked about for study is the narrow lanes, the drainage ditches that are gonna be impacted by this, but also the cost. You know, it's interesting, we didn't know about this until two weeks ago. In fact, it was interesting to learn that some of you may not have been learned about this particular issue either. But we've only learned about it two weeks ago, so we're scrambling as a community to understand the reality and the facts. It's unfair, really. But that's what we're dealing with. So as we go to the websites, the county websites, and we gain information, whether it's through direct conversation or through calling our local councilman, we've been trying to gain as much information as we possibly could. The traffic study that we have asked for was basically dismissed. It's not gonna be a big deal. There'll only be three vehicles. What we're asking for is the ability to be part of this process. We haven't been part of it preemptively. In fact, we've, we've only been brought up to speed over the last couple of weeks. Our only resources are to look at the videos and anything related to the county council meetings that impacted this UDO change, the appointment of certain people to committees in St. Charles County. We've just learned that Mark Gottfried was appointed to one of the planning and zoning committees back in May of this year. We think that's a conflict of interest as we sit here. The other fallacy, I think, we had a community event, people said, well, Mr. Bush will pay for those roads if that's all it takes, and that's all our only problem is, Mr. Bush will pay for those roads, and I couldn't disagree more. He shouldn't have to. If this is an approved project, why shouldn't it fall on the burden of any other municipality or county or state? It's not his burden to bear if you folks approve this project. But that does allow you, it does beg the question, who is gonna pay for the study? Who is gonna pay for the improvements to these roads? One of the things we're worried about is that if a road study comes back and says that there is improvement required for these roads, that it might be imminent domain that is impacting these people for changes to their property lines. What happens then? The last thing I'm gonna talk about is the optics of all of this. We have had very little time to digest it. What we've heard from a lot of citizens today is that there was direct impact, direct counsel from the county government that helped change the UDO. The applicant matched the UDO change almost verbatim. It was almost, it appears, the perception and optics looks like it was written exactly for this particular use case. I wanted to see if there, I wanted to see, just to be open, I wanted to make sure that there were other businesses that were asking for this UDO change, and we were able to find one other business. It was a St. Charles County brewery called the Good Sense Brewery. That Good Sense Brewery wants to expand, and it recently came to light that they are going to be able to expand under the UDO because of the permissible use in a commercial industrial space. That brewery will be expanding to Defiance in District Two, to the Trail House Smoke Restaurant that's down there on the wine trail. So we do know that there's two businesses affected and thirty-two homes. We ask that you make consideration for the thirty-two homes and the people that are in this community for the sake of making sure there's fair and balance in this decision. Thank you.
We're gonna take a three-minute break. Because the other, the other, the other CUP has no... Yeah, but they don't, they don't have anything to go on. Yeah. Oh, I think that's where the petting zoo, I think, is, yeah. Yeah, yeah. Ninety days, yeah. I'll put that on the right. Okay, who's, 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 who's Greg Carter? Again, as a summary, we've taken note of the issues of light pollution, noise abatement, water issues, traffic, waste disposal, property values, number of employees at the restaurant, the amount of beer to produce, et cetera. So if you have something new to add, we've already taken note of those issues, so.
Plus, we'd like to get the applicant back up, so just so you guys know, because we wanna ask him questions.
You solemnly swear affirm that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in these proceedings under the pains and penalties of perjury. Please state your name and address for the record.
Brian Donegan. My wife and I have, our property is twenty-four oh-six Hoffmeyer. So if you look at the map up here, Donegan Lake, you go to the dam on the far left side, that's our property back there, so we're one of those seventeen chosen properties, and I do compliment the county staff for considering that because it's very, very important to put some rails on this project that goes ahead, that there's gotta be some boundaries on this project, because if not, it's gonna be like the riverboat gambling down the street here. It started at what? A vote of little riverboats and a little low loss limits, right? All that, that's how it started, but then the growth just got bigger and bigger and bigger. This could happen on a smaller scale, but again, as long as this project is done in a tasteful fashion and considers the needs of the neighbors, I think it's very, very important. And again, I make my living doing design and engineering work in the commercial industry, but, and I'm not an acoustical engineer, but if you look at where that beer garden's gonna be, where it faces down to the lake, you've got hardscape on the back, you've got hardscape on the bottom there, it drops down a hill to a lake that's unimpeded there, and our property's right there, and unfortunately, we're gonna take a majority of the sound there. So I think some conditions need to be taken into account for that, not just for us, but the adjoining neighbors. We came out here and bought the property over fifteen years ago. Bridle Spur was our neighbor. They were great neighbors. We were very enthusiastic, and still enthusiastic. There are new neighbors who took possession. Billy Bush is, again, a horseman, equestrian enthusiast, and I think he's, we hope he's gonna do the right thing for all the neighbors in the adjoining area. And that's about all I have to say tonight.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Before I'm under oath, can I still say good evening?
Sure.
Good evening, Commission.
Yeah. You solemnly swear affirm that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in these proceedings under the pains and penalties of perjury.
I do.
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Zach McMichael. I'm an attorney in Clayton at the law firm Smith Almanson. My address is one-twenty South Central Avenue, Suite 700, St. Louis, Missouri. I'm here representing Phil and Laura Bissonette, nineteen Pine Cliff Court, Defiance, Missouri. We've heard a lot tonight. I just wanna quickly kinda put this whole process back in perspective for the Commission. As the Commission knows, St. Louis County has a master plan. That master plan lays out land use along with nine other factors that are supposed to be considered for the broad zoning, Euclidean zoning, for the whole entire county. Tonight, we're talking about one specific aspect of that zoning, that's land use. This parcel we're talking about tonight is Zoned A for agricultural. Within Euclidean zoning, there are permissive uses and conditional uses. I wanna go through, under the ordinance, just some of the permissive uses that are allowed under this agricultural zoning.
Sir, we're aware of those.
We wrote them.
I think it's important for the public to hear it, too. So some things that are allowed as a matter of right are apiaries, aviaries, fish hatcheries, sod farms, ferry landings. All of those things are things that could be done here by right without a conditional use permit. Other things that can be done here with the conditional use permit are airports and landing fields, centralized yard waste composting facilities, extraction, quarrying, or mining of sand, gravel, topsoil, or other material. These are all things that are under Euclidean zoning, things that could be done on this parcel that aren't new. These are things that have been here as long as there's been a master plan. Some other things I wanna talk about is, there've been a lot of concerns. The only person that I've heard really talk about facts is the applicant. And I want to address that what this commission, yeah, what this commission's supposed to do is, you're supposed to look at the five factors with the planner, you're supposed to look at the application, and you're supposed to decide, under the ordinance, whether there are conditions that need to be imposed to ensure these five standards are met. That's why you have... That's why you have a staff, and that staff has told you what they believe the right conditions are that need to be applied to this parcel. I think they're correct, you've heard what the applicant plans to do to make sure this is a safe, to make sure it's not injurious to the use or enjoyment of property, you've heard what they plan to do to make it so the aesthetics and scenic values aren't hurt, you've heard what they plan to do to make sure that the use doesn't substantially diminish or impair property values, and you've heard what they plan to do to make sure this conditional use doesn't impede the normal or orderly development of improvement of this surrounding property. You've also heard what your staff says needs to be done with this property to make sure that those things don't happen, those standards are met. I'll yield the rest of my time, thank you.
You solemnly swear or affirm that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in these proceedings under pains and penalties of perjury.
I do.
Please state your name and address.
My name's Matthew Settlemore.
Pardon?
My name's Matthew Settlemore, and I live at 66 Sunfish Drive in Defiance. I've known Billy for quite a while, I've lived out here for quite a while, I drive Benny Road very frequently going into the Weehangin area, so I'm familiar with the area and his Blue Heron Farm, his Polo Fields on the opposite side. One thing I'll say there, it's probably one of the most, one of the nicest kept areas around, as far as just, you know, you drive by there and you look and you say, wow, that looks like a beautiful area. As far as, I like to bring up, like, the people in the twelve subdivision neighborhood, at one time, that probably wasn't a twelve subdivision neighborhood, and they had to get zoning approval to build that neighborhood, and there was probably opposition to that. So, just, you know, bring that up, that, yes, areas do grow, and they're in that subdivision now, but somebody wasn't at one point, somebody probably didn't want a subdivision to be built in their backyard. And then, finally, just, a lot of shock and awe tonight with numbers and stuff that, in reality, five hundred people, you know, being at a restaurant at one time, I've never seen that in my life. So, out on, out on Biny Road, I just, I don't see that happening, just common sense, how many people you, you see at a normal restaurant is all, so, with that, thank you.
Thank you, sir. You solemnly swear or affirm that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in these proceedings under pains and penalties of perjury.
I do.
Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Jake Fuchsia, 418 Wolfram Road, Weldon Spring, Missouri. I'm just here to, today to tell you guys, the council, as well as, I guess, my fellow neighbors, kind of where I'm coming from, I actually work for Krefdig, so, I want to get a perception that's portrayed to you guys in the community that's far off from what we are, to give you guys an idea, we're six employees, we're family-owned, we're family-operated. I tell each and every one of you that, 'cause you walk into a store, you see a case of Krefdig next to Bud Light or Miller, and you think we're this huge company, we're not. Furthermore, Billy is trying to do something pretty special here, you guys, and that's what I hope everyone in this room understands, and that's creating a legacy that his family once built in the great, you know, city of St. Louis, and built his, his, you know, past generations a global powerhouse. Are we trying to be AB? No, we're not. Billy's simply just trying to keep an incredible tradition alive in his family, and going back to my sense, I worked in Texas a little bit, so when we talk about farm-to-table, you talk about transcending a brand and the local community, and what that can bring to the area. My last point, and this is all I'm gonna talk about, is conservation. This fall, we rolled out with a camo package, where we partnered with one of the biggest licensees worldwide, which is Realtree. To give you guys an idea, this is nothing new to anyone in here, they've given back generations. His father, August A. Bush Wildlife, all we're trying to do is basically, X amount of proceeds are given back from that package, directly back to the Missouri Department of Conservation. I'm saying that 'cause it's given back to the, to places like Defiance. So, I just want you guys to understand where he's coming from, and at the end of the day, he is, he has every intention with working with his neighbors and making it right at the end of the day. Thank you, guys.
You solemnly swear or affirm that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in these proceedings under pains and penalties of perjury.
I do.
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Barry Galloway, I'm at Knighton White River Lane, Defiance, Missouri.
Go ahead.
I've got a prepared statement here. This kind of innovated, innovative economic development that our, this is the kind of innovative economic development that our county can benefit from. This brew farm will generate tax revenue, which can be used in, for public works projects in unincorporated Charles County, potentially offset any necessary infrastructure upgrades required to support it. The more tax local businesses provide, the less residents should have to provide. The surrounding parks out there aren't likely generating tax revenue that the way this facility would be. Otherwise, this, sorry, unused agricultural land isn't gonna generate much tax on it, on its own. I moved out to Defiance to be closer to many of my preferred recreational destinations, wineries, parks, and all that as well. I think this, from what I've seen, the, the buildings and the facilities will fit right in, they don't, there's nothing, they're absolutely gorgeous, if they built this thing in another county, I would go visit it. This development is unique, will earn my business, and will earn business of many of my friends and neighbors. Most of the opposition I've heard, and I do appreciate this, folks, is not in my backyard, not in my backyard. If everybody's not in my backyard, requests were upheld, nothing would ever be built. Bromelsec Park, how many of you have been to a wedding there, seen music there? So, concerts, weddings, those all happen at Bromelsec, so some of the concerns about noise, I don't think are, are honest. One of the things I heard is that Mr. Godfrey is not a conservationist, I've seen his work in the Missouri Conservationist magazine myself, so that's just a little bit more about his character. And that's all I've gotta say tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You solemnly swear or affirm that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in these proceedings under pains and penalties of perjury.
I do.
Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Jason Rochelbank, I live at 28 Dolphine in Lake St. Louis, I work at 4151 Benny Road, I work in Polo, I've worked in the equine industry for twenty years across the United States, so, this guy stole a lot of my thunder, but I'm gonna add some new stuff. Thank you, guys, for your time, and thank you to the staff for preparing this, and I will tell you, the last time I did something like this, I promised to tell the truth, so help me God, now it's under penalty of perjury, and I think it used to be better the old way, but I'll let that go. See if they keep clapping, 'cause I went to the Sunday meeting, they didn't like me so much. You know, I think if people would kind of appreciate the project and not get excited about being against the person, I can tell you what I've seen in Louisville, Kentucky, and Lexington, Kentucky, in the distillery district, they got a Bourbon Trail there. All double-sided, double-lane highways, okay? It has done so much, it has been a boon to Lexington. If you ever go through there and go by Buffalo Trace or any of those distilleries, they're in a very pastoral setting, just like Benny Road. So, I'll offer that out there, because, once again, this last guy talking about the economic impact, I go out to Augusta, my phone doesn't work, I can't look at the map of the stars, right, but that really doesn't, not a lot of people are gonna be stargazing compared to how many people could go to a project like this. I'd also offer out a lot of the math that's been thrown around on quick-service restaurants and two-hundred-and-fifty seats, and if I serve this many kids at Wash U, that's how many gallons of water, and, you know, I can't worry about all that. Progress comes, things change. When I was at the Sunday meeting and I offered, isn't this better than a hundred houses? And someone, well, they can't do that, it's zoned like this and this. Well, in the first ten minutes here, I saw zoning change, I saw a couple houses get built, right? So, change, change comes. I think they've got a lot of valid concerns, but it's a lot of people that say they're talking about the community, but they're really talking about them. What's in this for them? How does this impact me individually?
Quiet.
I stay to that, I live at 28 Dol...
Sir, address is...
Okay, I apologize. So, I'm just telling you that if we keep it professional and look at it as a project and not the person, and we're not petty, I think it's a good project for the area. You know, I, I think a lot of guys have valid concerns, there's people braver than me that are gonna ride next to Porky Jurling's gravel trucks up and down Benny Road, I certainly wouldn't do that, but there's plenty of traffic for a lot of purposes on Benny Road, doesn't mean this is a bad project, this is a good project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. You solemnly swear or affirm that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in these proceedings under pains and penalties of perjury.
I do.
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Tamara Benny, I live at 4475 Huffmire. Obviously, from the last name, you know that my husband's family has been in the area since before all of the subdivisions. So, my thought on this is, you all have the power to make the future better. This project is probably gonna happen. Mr. Bush lives right next to me, he lives around me, he's been a great neighbor. However, he may not be here forever, this may not be his property forever. So, you have the power to think about the future of other people coming in to follow the same, you know, plans that are now in place. I would just, 'cause honestly, I wish none of the subdivisions were there, I mean, that's my, that's where I am. I understand where these people are coming from, not wanting people to move in, but you can't stop progress, what you can do is you can put limits on it, you can put reasons why you can and can't do things, you can make them toe the line to make this project an absolute benefit. The traffic, I'm not sure that's gonna be something that's gonna be easy to do, it is difficult. I think they're not being fair on the amount of traffic that they say that's gonna happen, and I think some of the other people that have, you know, have overstated it, it is somewhere in the middle. It is dangerous to pull out on 2D with all of the winery traffic going by and everything going by, people going, they cut into Benny Road at fifty miles an hour when it's thirty miles an hour, and they, they don't, they don't look, they don't pay attention. So, you guys have the ability to affect the future. If this project goes through, great, if it doesn't, there's still the ability for other people to bring microbreweries in, that won't be as conscientious as he is. So, make sure that you set up the legislation and the rules, so that the people who do want to do this in the future can provide safe, I would prefer it not to be there, however, it probably will be. So, make it safe, make it good, make it good for our community as good as you can make it. I appreciate your time, thank you.
You solemnly swear or affirm that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in these proceedings under pains and penalties of perjury.
I do.
Please state your name and address.
Tim Kerr, 614 Callaway Ridge Drive, Defiance. Been a resident of Defiance for about twelve and a half years now, thoroughly enjoy the area, but I also like to see the, you know, the progress that has taken place out there. You know, most of the people that have spoken here in front of me have conveyed the message that I, you know, I was looking to convey, but, you know, I'd like to see our community grow, and I think that a project like this, sharing it with, you know, the community and the residents, you know, surrounding the metro area here, allowing them to come out and enjoy it, I think it's just a positive win all the way around for everybody in, in the city or the township of Defiance, so, thank you.
You solemnly swear or affirm that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in these proceedings under pains and penalties of perjury.
I do.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Jerry Hespin, 7 Hobycat Drive, Defiance, Missouri.
Go ahead, Jerry.
Let's see, my wife Janet and I are longtime residents of the New Mallion Defiance area, about thirty years. Let me start out by saying that I definitely sympathize and, and share some of the concerns that have been brought up tonight. We certainly want to make the right decisions with respect to where we live, I think it's an outstanding place to live, raise a family, I've done that, raised four boys here. But, you know, I'm also a realist, you know, I can't stick my head in the sand and ignore what's going on and ignore the progress that I know is going to happen, I know change is coming sooner or later, so, so we need to find a way to deal with it. I think it's important that we, that we work together, come to a compromise, strike a balance between what we have now and what we know is coming. I believe that involves being proactive, making the right choices, when we have the opportunity to do, to do that. Most of the time, that opportunity only comes once, and then later, we might find something less desirable forced upon us. I think this proposal by the William K. Bush Brewery is one of those opportunities. From what I've seen, it's a project that has been carefully considered and designed to blend very well with our rural surroundings, while still presenting an upscale classy look. It is clear attention was given and diligence was employed to locate structures on the property in such a way to minimize visibility and impact to surrounding homeowners. I think there may be a little bit more work done, you know, in that regard, to make sure, make sure the compromise is good and folks become comfortable with the project. That part of it, though, isn't surprising to me, because, you know, Billy, the founder of the company, he's owned property in this area for quite some time, and he's practically our neighbor. You know, he has a vested interest in maintaining the quality of what we all share in this part of the county. Beyond that, to be clear, and I think this has been mentioned before, you know, this brewery, you know, they, they share the Bush name with a much larger brewery now owned by European interests, we know this, but, in reality, this company's a small, independent brewery dedicated to high quality in everything they do, and, and they're firmly committed to the St. Louis area, okay? So, they will listen, you know, as this project goes on, if there are issues, they will You know, they could have chosen to build anywhere, but I believe the decision to place this facility in this part of St. Charles County is a reflection of that company image, that hometown attitude, and the general appreciation for the beauty of that area. Yes, it's a compromise, understand it, there's gonna be some impact. You know, some of those impacts, we know, are eventually coming, no matter what we do. Progress is coming. In this particular case, I believe we have the opportunity to have something really special and unique in St. Charles County, involving a small, dedicated hometown company, partnered with the community, and allowing great potential to grow together. So, I think this will be a good thing for the area today and in the future, and it's certainly much better than many alternatives that could have come along later that we might be forced into in other situations. And as I said, we have some work to do, we have some more compromising to do, I think we can work together and work out something that's gonna be good for everybody, so, thank you.
You swear or affirm that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in these proceedings under pains and penalties of perjury.
I do.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Patricia Carpenter, 613 Callaway Ridge, Defiance, Missouri.
Go ahead, Patricia.
Hi, I just want to state that most of the people in here, you know, they're against Mr. Bush and this project. I've lived in St. Louis for a very long time, and I never heard of the Bushes before I came here, I didn't even drink alcohol before I came in, I still don't drink alcohol, but the Bush family has done a lot for St. Louis, and, you know, and I appreciate that, and I think having this built in Defiance is gonna bring up a lot, a lot of tax dollars for the area and a lot of revenue, and I think that it would be a, you know, a bad decision not to have it in that area, because that area really needs the, the help out there, I think, because of the, you know, they don't have a lot of revenue out there right now, and 'cause of the, everybody's saying, oh, the fire department's not there, that's why they're not there, because of the low revenue. Once you start bringing some revenue out there, you're gonna get more help out there, and this is gonna bring that revenue out there, so, I think this is gonna help, so...
Thank you. You solemnly swear or affirm that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in these proceedings under pains and penalties of perjury.
Yes, I do.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Steven Church, 2557 Engletown Road in St. Louis. I wanted to, I've heard a lot of references tonight to restaurant, noise, and Grant's Farm. I grew up two-hundred feet away from Grant's Farm's front gate. Our road... Our road, Grant Road, no bigger than Beanie Road. Eddieam Park is two lanes, ditches probably 10, 15 feet. The noise, I could tell you, from Grant's Farm, I never heard Frank Sinatra, Hootie and the Blowfish, Little River Band, Taylor Swift, any of these have played there, performed there. Noise has never been an issue to us. What has been an issue to us in Afton, Missouri, is the Bush family. And the Bush family stewards of Afton, Missouri, they've maintained Afton, Missouri, and they've kept it a peaceful, quiet, beautiful neighborhood. And Billy Bush's father was a terrific neighbor, the Bush family were terrific neighbors, and I cannot say enough about what Grant's Farm has done for our neighborhood, and it would be a shame for Defiance not to let something like this happen here. So, that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no one else to speak?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to continue the hearing, public hearing, until October 17th, 2018.
Is motion made to continue the public hearing until the October 17th, 2018 meeting? Do I have a second?
Yeah, I would like to second that. I think there's a lot of pluses and minuses that have been there, and I think it needs more time to digest.
I can agree to that as well. I just wondered if there's specific questions that we would like the applicant to answer in the next month, and what information would we like to see forward, you know, by that time?
Personally, I think we need a traffic study done there, and, you know, there's been questions about who does the traffic studies. It's always done by the applicant. The county doesn't go out and hire traffic studies done. We have very good people that know how to digest and break down the information that they're, that were provided. So, you know, I just wanted to nip that one in the bud right from the beginning, the developer is the one that does the traffic studies. I don't think that's an unreasonable request, and that's one piece of information that I think we need, and I'd turn it over to you guys to see what else that you'd like to see.
I think that's my biggest concern is the traffic and some of the other things like, how much does it really going to tax the infrastructure, how much is it going to tax auxiliary type of personnel in the county? It'd be nice to have some understanding in numbers and studying that, too.
And my reason for continuing is, we've, all of us up here received this with very short notice, as a lot of the people out there, and I personally, we've heard a lot of testimony and facts and figures, this is what will be the largest project in St. Charles County. I need some time to evaluate, listen to everything, and absorb this, but I think on this scale and the importance of this needs to be, that's why I made a motion to continue the public hearing till October 17th, and to address some of Mike's questions, I think, in between this. If this thing gets continued, you can hear from the applicant, and then we'll have some more things, and we'll go through a learning curve so we can make, you know, we're here, we're the only independent part of St. Charles County government. Everybody's sitting up here with the exception of you, you're part of the government because you're on the county council. We're not paid, we don't have any biases, we don't have to get reelected, and we're the voice of the people. And I think this deserves to listening to the voice of the people and analyze all this. And for have this, my phone started ringing off the hook just on Thursday, and with a lot of the people out here, and I'll tell you, there's a lot of information here to absorb in such a short period of time, it's a very, very important decision. I live, everybody here is council district two, I live in Defiance, I've lived there a lot longer than some of the other people here. I have different opinions of that, but I'm very open to it, and I'm not against, you know, improvement, but I think, at least personally, I need more time to absorb this.
Anyone else, any other comments?
Well, I mean, honestly, I'd rather have the applicant come up right now, just make sure that, what do you got? I mean, I don't, you don't want to do that?
I have a motion, though, before.
I know. I mean, are they going to be able to address some of these things and meet with the, is that what you're planning for him to do?
Yes.
Okay, all right, yeah, I'm for that.
I'd like to see if there's any way they could be some type of drawings showing some type of a commercial entrance off of the Benny Road into the property, just showing, anything that would show the, you know, will there be any kind of a turn lane into there or just something that widens that spot where you're going to be pulling in there, if that's possible.
I'm more concerned about the connection to D.
Yeah.
Any other comments? Okay, has a motion been made to continue, application CUP 18-12 to the October, or the, yeah, the October 17th, 2018 meeting? Been made and seconded, Mr. McBride, how do you vote?
Yes.
I vote yes. Mr. Cleary?
Yes, I vote for continuing.
Mr. Fromm?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. Klinghammer?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Motion passes, so this is continued to our October meeting. Now, at the start of this meeting, about four hours ago, I made reference that applications for continual use permits that were heard tonight, we would make a recommendation, and the application would be introduced at the Tuesday, October the 9th, 2018 county council meeting, and that public comment would be taken at the county council meeting on Tuesday, October the 9th. That will not happen, okay, since we have continued this to our next regularly scheduled meeting. According to our county code and the zoning regulations that under section 405.060, that the Planning and Zoning Commission, we have to submit a report and recommendation to the county council within 90 days of the public hearing. So, that's our obligation to, within 90 days of tonight, to submit a report and recommendation to the county council for their consideration. So, this will not be at the county council October the 9th, it will be back here at Planning and Zoning on October 17th. Okay, next on the agenda is CUP 18-3. Applicant is Yarkstick Studio LLC, the owner is Blue Heron Polo Club LLC and Blue Heron Farm. Property zoning is agricultural district, use requested is brewhouse, the area consists of 62.4 acres. Locations on the south side of Benny Road, approximately 2,000 feet west of Wilson Road and Council District Two. Staff?
Mr. Chair, since this is basically the same thing, can we make a motion just to continue this one until the next meeting as well?
I'll make a motion to continue just to the October 17th.
Do we have to have a public hearing?
Or do we have to listen to?
We have to have, yeah, we have to go through this.
We're talking about the wording here, would this be tabling, because you haven't opened the public hearing yet, would it be tabling this until the date certain to the October?
I think all the same questions are going to come up again, so if they're, procedurally, if we can table it until the next meeting, I'd like to make that motion that, and I see our DED does not in our head, yes, so I'll make a motion that we continue, we table it until the next.
Continue it.
Can we table?
Continue it.
Table.
Table. Our DED says we need to table it. I'll defer to the attorney in the room.
If you're not going to discuss it at all, if you're not going to open the public hearing and not conduct any question answering session, then this would be a table item.
Make a motion that we table it.
Continue.
No, table.
Table, we're going to table this one.
Table. Table. Getting late.
Come on, Roger.
Don't ask what the difference between tabling and continuing is, because I'm not sure at this point, nor do I care. I would like to make a motion to table it until the next meeting.
Okay. Mr. Fromm, second. Mr. Griffin, a motion to table CUP 18-13 until the next, or October 17th meeting.
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
I vote yes. Mr. Cleary?
Yes.
Mr. Fromm?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. Klinghammer?
Yes.
Okay, that passes, so CUP 18-13 is tabled until the October 17th meeting. Now, my comments about the conditional use permit that, and the prior CUP applies to this one also, so nothing will go, either one of these, neither one will go in front of the county council on the night, everything comes back here on the 17th. We have 90 days from today to submit a report and recommendation to the county council for their consideration.
I just want to add again, I'm not biased at all, I spent some time with Mark Godfrey, he drove me all, the entire property, I could see firsthand, none of you were privileged that, I got the feel of what they're doing, and again, goes back to the same reason before, so much, I even talked to Mark about this, it's so much information, and it's such a short period of time. That's one of the things I addressed with Robert, we didn't even find out about this definition until this came up, and this was voted on three months ago, why don't we have it? I think if we had a UDO, we'd say, oh, that's interesting, why is that coming up? Not even knowing that you were talking about anything. So, there's a lot of information for all of us, and I think, at the end of the day, we need a lot of analysts, and where we go?
Okay. Next item on our agenda is approval of the August 15th, 2018 meetings. Do I have a motion to approve these minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, sign aye.
Aye.
Staff, is there any other business to be considered?
No.
No other business to be considered, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All's in favor, sign aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.[1778.22]